Madam President, are you ready for me to call roll? Trish Bodie, here. Gloria Gonzalez Dulacchia, here. Anna Smith, here. Shadé Fashakoun, here. Paul Gautier, here. Christine Maurer, here. Francesca Romans, here.
All right, it is 6:17 PM and with the quorum of the board present, I declare our regular meeting of the Leander ISD Board of Trustees to order. We will now be moving to the next item on our agenda, which is our pledge of allegiance. But before we stand, let me introduce to you who will be leading us in our pledges this evening. Cadet Master Sergeant Maddie Moran. Maddie is the daughter of James and Sarah Peniman Moran and a student at both Cedar Park and Leander High School. She's a leader as well. Maddie is the Air Force JROTC Cadet Corps Superintendent and aspires to become a nurse in the Army. Thank you for your hard work, dedication, for being a leader. Well done, Cadet Master Sergeant Maddie Moran.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now the Texas flag. Under Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and invisible.
If you'll join me in a moment of silence, please. Thank you.
All right, board members, we will now move to the next favorite part of seeing more students at our board meeting. We will start with our recognition, our spotlight on learning from Jim Plain Elementary School.
All right, thank you so much. So hello, thank you for having us tonight. I'm Erica Cruz, the very proud principal of Jim Plain Elementary. During my two years at Plain, I have witnessed the staff of JPE collaboratively create a culture that allows for them to feel connected and empowered. So one way that we've empowered staff is through our unified and collective voice. Together, we rewrote our vision for the students that we serve. And together, we developed criteria and look fours to hold one another accountable. We've also created systems and structures to support continuous improvement through PLC, RTI processes, and professional development that teachers regularly provided input on. Three tenants that we follow are One Student, One Campus, One World. One student is our reminder that intentional relationships and connections are paramount and serve as a catalyst for achievement and growth. The One Campus is our dedication to Plain and to continuously improving the systems that we have in place. And finally, One World is representative of our pursuit for innovation, curiosity, and student interest that will go far beyond our campus walls. We truly believe every child can and will change the world. And now, I'm pleased to pass this on to a few of our teachers and students. Mrs. Huerta, our special education team lead, will be speaking about her experience serving in all grade levels. While Ms. Holmes and Mrs. Leeming will be highlighting some of the amazing work that's being done in their classrooms. First, we'll start with Mrs. Leeming, fifth grade teacher.
Hi, my name is Mandy Living. I'm shaking, sorry. And I'm happy to share how I have been empowered as a teacher and as a member of the Jim Plain pride. The Kagan training that was provided for our staff has allowed teachers to incorporate new strategies that work best for them as they support their students in collaboration. We have also been empowered through professional development focused on highly engaging strategies, restorative practices, and relational practices. Finally, I have been empowered and given the freedom to create collaborative and engaging book clubs in my classroom. Here are the members of one of my book clubs to share how they have been empowered through their book club experience.
Hi, my name is Judah and this is my book club, We Are The Boys Book Club. I love that I get to have a voice in my group and that I am understood.
My name is Rav and I love to, love that I get to communicate with my classmates.
My name is Ethan and I love that I get to have a choice in the books we read and the way we discuss it.
My name is Dylan and I love having fun reading a book with my friends.
My name is Arthur and I love that I get to connect to my reading in so many different ways.
My name is Leo and I like that we have the option to read our book club book together or individually. I also like that we get to read our assignments around the room.
Thank you. And now we'll hear from Ms. Holmes, second grade teacher.
Hi, I'm Ally Holmes and as a teacher at Plain, I have felt empowered to always designate time to build strong connections and relationships with every single student. Teachers have the freedom to be flexible in how we implement morning meetings in order to foster positive relationships with every child. I would like to introduce you to one of my students, Tyler. Tyler has asked me to share with you what has helped him continue to be successful. When asked how teachers have helped Tyler learn better and have a positive experience at school, Tyler discussed working on positive affirmations that we learned together as a class. He shared his positive affirmation that he chose "I'm Going to Shine Today." He was very proud to share this with a visitor who came to our room, as you can see in this picture. When asked how teachers have helped Tyler build friendships and relationships, he discussed his experience going to Language Lab and how he has met so many new friends. Tyler showed a friendly letter that he wrote to one of his new friends that he just met in Language Lab and was very excited. Tyler also communicated his experience with social skills and how they talk about how to control their anger with different friends. When asked about how he feels at school, he stated that everyone makes him feel safe. He also said our whole school assemblies is something he really enjoys. He feels empowered and confident to share his positive affirmations with everyone. I have always valued taking the time to build strong connections with my students, not solely the students on my roster, but students across the entire campus. I'm thankful for the open conversations, support, professional development opportunities that have addressed campus-wide needs that were identified by all staff members. This allowed teachers to have a voice in our continuous improvement. Tyler's experience is just one example of how students feel empowered because their teachers have been empowered.
Right, and to conclude, we'll hear from Mrs. Huerta, who is our special education team lead.
Hi, I'm Kristi Huerta. And at Jim Plain, we as teachers are empowered not only to build connections with our students, but also with our colleagues. The culture on our campus is one of unity, collaboration, and safety. As a team, we have created a clear vision for our campus and our administration allows us to be creative, flexible, and confident in our teaching. As a special education teacher, I'm able to witness the unity and teamwork across all grade levels. We feel safe to communicate our wants and needs and be heard with an open mind. And as we like to say, we are the pride of Jim Plain.
Thank you again for the opportunity just to highlight some of the amazing work that's happening at Plain. Our pride is growing by the day. And as a leader, I know that our students will only thrive if the teachers and staff have what they need to be successful. And as a leader, I do feel very supported and empowered to do that. Whether that's a training, an additional resource, time to connect with the child, a voice in decision-making, or just a seat at the table, we are committed to just equipping and empowering our staff to serve our JPE community. Thank you.
All right, board members, if y'all could go stand behind our speakers there and we'll get a picture with our teachers and students. All right, oh, and parents, thank y'all so much for coming out and bringing those kids. Thank you so much. We appreciate y'all. We didn't get them to stand up. I missed my moment there. All right. We'll move on to our next item, which is the Texas Music Educators Association, TMEA, All-State Band and Choir Presentation.
Hello, everyone. My name is Abby Martinez from CPHS News.
And I'm Katie Whitmarsh. We're thrilled to help recognize some amazing people and hashtag OneLISD.
Dozens of Leander ISD student musicians competed in the Texas Music Educators Association area auditions. Forty-six LISD band and choir students were selected as TMEA All-State Musicians, the highest individual accomplishment that a high school student can attain.
Help us celebrate students at Cedar Park High School.
Leander High School. Rouse High School. Vandergrift High School. And Vista Ridge High School. All of these talented musicians are currently in San Antonio. They're performing with premier high school musicians from all over Texas during the TMEA State Convention.
On behalf of all of us across hashtag OneLISD, congratulations to these incredible students and their families, as well as their outstanding directors.
Somebody should have counted the number of kiddos. I realized. Was it forty-six? Math, I love it. Great job. There are so many kiddos there. That's fabulous. Board members, we've been deliberate about making sure student voice continues to be a focus of our board meetings, that students at the heart of all of our decisions, like in core beliefs. So not only did we have our pledge lead by our student, we had our spotlight on learning from students. We have a bunch of students being recognized, which is fabulous. We are now also having students speak first at citizen comments. So we'll have them as the speakers first and then we'll go down to the adults. With your permission, we had a public hearing that was actually going to go first. The public hearing would be a presentation about twenty-ish minutes long and then would go into comments. But because we have speakers here, I'm going to go ahead and just start with our citizen comments. We'll go ahead and start with our students, which honors the heart of what we've talked about as a board, go through the rest of our community, then we'll stop. We only have one person signed up for our public hearing, so then we'll go to our public hearing and then we'll have that one speaker. All right?
Madam President, can I just add really quickly to that, the TMEA thing? The honor band for double C for the state is the Wiley Band. They'll be performing at TMEA as well tomorrow.
Excellent. Thank you. Excellent. All right, we will go ahead and move towards our citizen comments. Before we have y'all come up, we will start with a video.
The district and the Board of Trustees are the local government body charged with serving the educational needs of all schoolchildren in the Leander Independent School District, like me, my mother's favorite child, as they pursue their mission to cultivate each individual student while creating a safe and supportive environment. The board is now taking up the citizen comment agenda item, which is time set aside during this meeting to hear from the whole community, which can include a wide audience of the entire LISD family. Still, remember that there are other ways you can communicate with the board. You can send them an email, come to a board cafe, or just tell them that you would like to chat sometime. The district believes the Leander family thrives and we ensure a welcoming, safe, and caring environment. Board operating procedures and BED locals specify guidelines, so it is important that you have read them before you speak. The board wants to hear from everyone, but still asks you to be mindful of your conduct and the example you are choosing to set when presenting complex information. If you're presenting material that only certain high schoolers may encounter, remember that schoolchildren of all ages may participate in the board meetings, either by watching them or you might see some in the audience. When the board president calls your number, remember, watch the timer and focus your remarks to the time allotted. We know it can be difficult, but please conclude your comments when you hear the chime.
All right, thank you so much. Speaker number one. Speaker number two.
Hi, my name is Laney Sumin. I'm a seventh grader at Styles Middle School. And at Styles, we're taught to speak up for ourselves, so I'm here to advocate for the zoning changes impacting neighborhood 1205. Ever since kindergarten, I've made close friendships that have just kept growing. These people are constantly around me and influencing me. They have become like family to me. And now, when we go into high school, I'll be at Glenn and they'll be at Rouse. Not even one of my friends is going to be rezoned to Glenn because it's just our neighborhood. You have kept us with neighborhoods such as Escalera Ranch and Serita Valley in previous changes, but not this time. Our neighborhood is literally less than 5% of Styles and the only neighborhood that will be attending Glenn. At Glenn, I can't just replace these friendships that have taken me years to build, not to mention the connections I already have made with Rouse. Basketball is such a big part of my life and I've been going to Rouse basketball camp since I was younger. By going to Glenn, I'm leaving my teammates and the Rouse coach, both of which I've learned to play with. I hope you will consider my feedback and keep 1205 at Rouse.
All right, thank you, speaker. Speaker number two, uh, three.
Thank you to the board members, Superintendent Gearing, and LISD teachers and staff for all you do, and to the police officers here to protect us. Today, I'm here to amplify on my previous theme of book choices available to students, with Black History Month as an example. I enjoy reading about black history, both fiction and nonfiction. Fiction can help us to understand experiences we haven't had, as well as ones we have. Nonfiction can give us access to facts and analysis to make the world a better place. In both fiction and nonfiction, we can read about the distant past and tie it to our own experiences so we can contribute to our communities and live better lives. For much of American history, it was illegal for most black people even to read, and illegal to teach us to read. It is no exaggeration to say that reading is a pivotal part of black history and the struggle of black people to gain freedom. Learning to read and write, often in defiance of law and custom, provided the path for black people to advocate for their freedom. This in turn provided many of the freedoms we all cherish that were not in our original constitution: equal protection, due process, the right to have families, the right to choose their marriage partners, to own property, the right to vote, the right to speak in public, and the ability to vindicate those rights in the courts of law. Denying the ability to read is denying the ability of people to live a life of the mind, to exercise their freedoms, and to imagine how they can make the world a better place. Thank you for protecting these rights.
All right, thank you, speaker number three. Speaker number four. All right, speaker number five.
I signed up tonight for the citizens' comments to continue to give feedback from my experience Tuesday night at a special meeting. I sat and watched closely and watched all the information. And I have one key point that I want to give as citizens' feedback to that meeting. You never did answer the questions that we were trying to ask. You never addressed the questions that Paul asked. I told you, we all know how that process works. We know how the budget systems work. We were asking about questions about how we are spending the money. We know we have the money that we can spend. We know that we're in debt. We're questioning, should we be? Are we spending the money in the right places? That never got addressed in the meeting. You also very, very delicately avoided the question, the discussion about the number of students who are not enrolled, who are leaving. I know, I see what's going on. People are leaving. There are people, parents, who want to leave but can't because of work or other financial problems. You know what? They're finding a way to do it. People are leaving because you won't take us seriously. You dismiss us like some far-right small group when nothing could be further from the truth. The truth is that change is coming. School finance reform is coming. Governor Abbott's placed it as a priority. Our president has stated he's going to change it. Change is coming. The money will follow the child.
All right, thank you, speaker number five. Speaker number six.
Good evening, Board. Thanks for the opportunity here. So I'm here to represent 1205 Zone, which is proposed in 2425 to be rezoned to Glenn High School. So I have two kids who are currently studying ninth grade and seventh grade, who will be impacted, and there are tens of other kids in my community, Bluffview on Ronald Reagan, who will be impacted with this. We understand the goal of proposed rezoning is to address the growing enrollment in schools, rebalancing them, and provide equitable access to the community, all of the kids in the neighborhoods. But I want to address the important activity that is being planned in the same rezon proposal, which is, High School Seven is coming in the Northeast, which is actually planned for 2930. So we have to face this rezon in 2425, and again, another rezon activity that is planned in 2930. And the new high school is within walkable distance from my community. So we are 100% sure that we will be impacted by the new high school, and it will be two rezones within the span of five years. So I want you to consider to continue 1205 Zone in the same high school, which is Rouse High School, and not move us to Glenn. Please consider our request and do not impact our students and our families. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker number six. Speaker number seven.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the service of the community and all the work making kids and communities more successful. We are new to the Leander ISD community. We are so far proud and very happy to be part of the community. Special thank you for, you know, thinking about future and saving their tax money, about like, you know, getting a new high school, getting a new middle school, you know, abiding the tax-based money, and you know, by doing the rezoning exercise. I really appreciate like, you know, for the long-term planning and you know, what you guys are going through. I really appreciate for that. I'm part of the 1205 community where we recently moved, community called Bluffview. We used to live in Round Rock ISD, and all of my, I have two sons, one goes to elementary and one goes to middle school. We moved to LISD just because of friends and family circles, when we also moved to the Leander ISD, and they're also living in that school zone. By doing this change, the children will be, you know, whoever in the Styles, we will also, and all his friend will goes to Rouse. Seventy-seven percentages of the Styles middle school community will goes to Rouse, but the only 12% goes to Glenn.
All right, thank you, Speaker number seven. Speaker number eight. Oh, let's make sure we turn on your mics so we can hear you. There's a button right, has a little space on there. Yep, there you go.
Are you able to hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, appreciate that. Okay, thanks for the opportunity to allow us to speak here. I actually belong to the 1205 schooling zone, and I have two kids. One goes to the high school, Rouse, and one goes to the middle school, that is Styles. One of the concerns that we have is with this rezoning, the daily commute for our people in the zone actually increases by 50%. The distance that we have to travel, our kids have to travel increases by 50%, and the time that it takes probably actually increases further. And while actually going, if the rezoning happens, while the kids have to, if the kids have to go to Glenn, they have to actually drive through Rouse. So it just makes a little bit less sense for us to drive farther and drive through Rouse to go to Glenn. Also, we all know that high school is very important for our kids and extracurricular activities, because we want them to participate in the, in the clubs so that they can actually get prepared for the college. If they, if they want to participate in any of the clubs, they would be missing their bus, and the parents would actually have to drive that much longer to pick up the kids. And, and, and doing that in one direction for the high school and in completely another direction for the middle school actually puts a lot of stress on the, on the parents, and it actually decreases the options that the kids have to participate in the extracurricular activities. So to conclude, I would say that please reconsider this decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. Next speaker, thank you.
Can you guys hear me? Hey, thank you so much, Board. Thanks for taking your precious time hearing us out. So I represent community Zone 1205, and again advocating for us to stay with Styles and Rouse. This is very important to me, because I moved all the way from Chicago-St. Charles to Leander for the schools, and this is going to put a lot of strain if I have to be rezoned to Glenn School. Couple of things, right? We do have a rezon that's proposed 2029, and I feel like this is an unnecessary strain put on community at this point in time. We're going to be rezoned two times in span of five years, and I have kids right now going to elementary, middle, and high school, and I can run in different directions to collect them after school. So this puts enormous strain, and in this world of remote work, I work for California hours, my wife works for New York hours, it makes it very difficult for us, both before school and after school, to drop and pick my kids. I would, I would be most benefi, it would be most beneficial to keep us all in the same line, Rouse, Styles, and Tarvin, which is all in a straight line, and makes our lives much, much easier. So I would strongly recommend the Board to reconsider this rezoning exercise, and I also feel like there are alternative solutions that can be better suited for this exercise, because when we do the rezoning in 2029, I do feel that there'll be communities impacted again. We should just think a little bit better to come up with alternate solutions here. Thank you for the time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Speaker. Next speaker. My, my system isn't showing the numbers, so I'm... Okay, Speaker number 10. Thank you. Having technical difficulties, but I will get it fixed by our next meeting. Speaker number 10? Okay. Speaker number 11? Speaker number 11? Speaker number 12? Okay.
Shocking, but I'm from neighborhood 1205 as well. I have three daughters, one in elementary, one in middle, and one in high school. I've also worked for the school district and have volunteered for this, in the school district for the past eight, eight years. I consider us very lucky to be a part of LISD family, and appreciate all of you taking the time to be here. We deeply understand the need to relieve some of the overcrowding at secondary schools. We were disappointed when the bond did not pass and stand with the Board in the frustration as they need to move forward with rezoning. We support the changes proposed to lighten the load at Styles. We are thankful to be able to stay at Styles. I am here tonight to strongly protest moving neighborhood 1205 to Glenn. Last night, the community meeting kicked off by informing attendees that the district had taken north-to-south commutes into consideration when coming up with new zoning plans. What about east-west commutes? Why was this not considered? Glenn is three times as far for us to travel. The routes to Glenn are on narrow, winding, busy roads. We have 2243 and Hero Way as our access points, both which are one-way. I'm currently teaching my six, 15-year-old daughter to drive, and the idea of her having to take these routes daily is terrifying. Not only that, but much construction is planned for both those roads in the coming future. I beg of the Board to reconsider the move of the neighborhood of Rouse to Glenn. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Speaker. Speaker number 13.
Thank you to the Board, to the teachers and staff of Leander, Leander Independent School District, and to the police who are here to protect us. You know, I'm a parent. One thing I really love is when my children exceed me. You know, they're a lot smarter than me, better spoken than me, better people than me in a lot of ways, and I learn so much. I've learned so much this Black History Month from my daughter's perspectives about topics that have been before the Board for more than a year, and about what materials kids have access to. And the thing that I really reflect on is that had black people not defied the law and defied custom, and had some white people actually not helped them to obtain access to the written word, our country would be a very different place, and it's doubtful whether slavery would be illegal, because black people are the people who made the arguments that won the day. And I think that that goes to the discussions that have been ongoing among, yes, extremist right-wing people, who've been trying to limit the access to thought, to words, to the ability of students to create a better future for themselves and for everyone in this country and the world. And I've learned that, a lot about that in terms of Black History Month, but I think that that lesson applies throughout the year and all years, and should be kept in mind. We really should not try to limit, limit access to high-quality materials, and I really appreciate that this school district makes those available and makes that freedom of thought something we can all enjoy. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Speaker number 13. Speaker number 14.
Hi, I'm here representing the LISD water polo community, and I thank you for letting me speak here tonight. If water polo is not a supported program in LSID, we will be a district that is falling behind. While our neighbors, neighboring districts embrace growth, we are, we apparently want to hide from it. Is that the kind of district we are? I did not think so when I chose to move here with my family. The LISD Athletic Department has not given this program a chance from the beginning. A public information request with the Leander Athletic Department showed that they allocated $27,000 for water polo this year, and spent only $3,100 of that money. Of course, it didn't work. They underpaid the coaches compared to surrounding districts. Now, the Athletic Department seems to be digging in their heels and declaring to us yet again that there will not be a water polo program next year. It is the job of the Athletic Department to build and support this program, and they are not doing their job. Shameful. The Athletics Department claims that swim coaches are not in support of water polo. This is false. In recent and formal discussions with the swim coaches that participated in water polo last year, it has been stated that they support water polo under better circumstances, specifically hire a dedicated water polo coach. There are over 140 kids in this district that want to play water polo next year. Let them play.
Thank you, Speaker. Speaker number 15.
I'm here again to save Leander Water Polo and need your help. $200,000. This is the minimum cost that our family would have to bear to provide high school water polo for our children if Leander Athletics does not get this done. We have strongly considered moves to Round Rock and Eames ISD, which will have UIL water polo for next year, and even sending our children to private schools. With two kids at Vandergrift High School next year, we don't have time to lose. This is just one family's pain. Consider the almost 100 student athletes competing across three Leander High Schools and the impact on admissions and scholarships this would have. This is especially important for girls, of whom nearly 4% of high school athletes go on to play for NCAA Division One schools, which is higher than most other sports. And consider admissions to top universities looking to build their programs in a growing sport. As the program grows to include 500 and maybe even 1,000 students over their Leander school years, consider that those families will look elsewhere to neighboring Round Rock, Austin, and Eames School Districts for their water polo programs as they invest. 500 students represents $5 billion of district funding per year, and possibly $50 million over their student careers. The math is simple. The return on investment pays off, not just for the students, but for the entire district. We need water polo head coaches and assistants at three high schools next year, with shared pool facilities and an early class period. It's easy to do with proper coaches and funding, and our success can only grow. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. Speaker number 16.
Members of the Board and Dr. Gearing, thank you for listening to our requests and concerns during citizen comments at the January 26 Scoreboard Meeting concerning cancellation of water polo as a UIL sport. The three LISD high schools with current UIL water polo teams are working together and have the following request. Most importantly, we are requesting that the Athletics Department reconsider the decision to cut water polo as a UIL sport in LISD for next year. This was asked by the speakers at the last meeting, and we will continue to ask for this. Although we appreciate the opportunity to meet with LISD administration on February 13th, the meeting, as framed in the Google form sent by the Athletic Department, does not meet our needs. According to the form, the Athletic Department wants to continue to explain the challenges to us. As parents and players, we are very aware of the challenges and have repeatedly provided solutions and offered to partner with them. Further, our teams had successful seasons even with these challenges. We do not wish to sit with LISD's administration. We do wish to sit with them in a productive meeting to collaborate on solutions for the 2324 school year. We, the water polo families from all three schools, have collectively nominated four individuals from each school to represent us in the meeting. Those 12 individuals are available for the meeting on Monday at the specified time. We do not wish our representatives to be selected at random. It seems that LISD Athletics view us as adversaries. Please understand that our desire is to partner with LISD and bring back water polo for the 2324 school year and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Speaker number 17. All right, so we've called all the way to Speaker 17. None of those numbers are here. We're going to Speaker 17 then. 17's not here. Speaker number 18.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Desiree Granzo. I'm speaking here as a parent, and I'm actually speaking under the direction of my children, who are both here in the audience. Our family participated in a elementary school playground audit, and we actually checked a number of elements, and we did this in conjunction with other families in the district. We were looking at access and safety. And to give you a quick rundown of what we discovered, we actually, our family went to 25 different campuses, and they tested everything. So you want to talk about the student perspective? That's what we centered here. And so there were three main items that we were looking at, and I'm speaking in terms of the bond and some needs that we have. ADA accessible swings. There were only nine campuses of those 25 that we visited that had a swing, and five of those, the harnesses either weren't present or they were broken. So that's a big need for our district. The next would be fencing, proper fencing around areas in schools. So we looked at elopements. That means incidents where students have run off-campus into dangerous areas like roads and so forth. We have 11 documented campuses with elopements, with multiple elopements, by the way. So that's something we should be looking at. And then the last item will be canopies, which we all know we need. 17 campuses have some kind of canopy. Not everyone has a canopy over each area, right? And the rest need them, we're in Texas, right? That's kind of a safety item and an equity item. And the last thing I have for you, you have a spreadsheet on that, by the way, but the last item I have for you is my youngest daughter actually drafted a letter for you all right before the meeting. I don't know technically how to...
Thank you, Speaker. All right, thank you very much. We'll move on to our public hearing. We have, we have-- Oh, 19. Oh, one more. Thank you. 19.
Good morning, good afternoon, Board. Somewhere in there. No truth, no gender, no boundaries. It seems to be where we are these days in our society. I was not happy to see that TASB sent out a letter to Mr. Gearing and all the districts in the state requesting that they let students use the bathroom of their choice. That seems rather patently against the Human Genome Project. There are only two genders, as we know. There are only two sex chromosomes. Everything else is virtual genders, living in the minds of the afflicted. I'm sorry for them, but that is what transgenderism is. All right. The question I have for you is, are you going to show leadership and stop this from being a kudzu vine in our school systems? Are you going to say no? That's all I'm asking. Are you going to say no to this request from the Texas Association of School Boards, which has now added themselves as clowns? I would also request that you withdraw from this association, stop using taxpayer money for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. Okay, this concludes our Citizen Comments, and we'll now go to our public hearing. We'll have administration come up. Well, the way the script was written for me is I'm supposed to invite community members before y'all speak? So we're going to do the speakers before you speak? I'm just making sure we're all on the same page. So the Board of Trustees will now open the public hearing on the 2021-2022 Texas-- yeah, 2021-2022, in case you weren't aware of the dates-- Texas Academic Performance Report as required by Texas Education Code 39.306. We invite any members of the community who wish to be heard to come forward at this time, who signed up. I know Speaker number one is who we have who's signed up. I'm expecting Speaker number one to come through the door, so. Okay. All right. Are there any other members of the community? I know I'm going with the script they gave me. All right, we will go ahead then and move to the presentation.
Good evening, Madam President and trustees. I'm Brenda Cruz, the Director of State Assessment Accountability, and this is Emily Gray, our Senior Coordinator for K-12 measures. And this evening, we will be reviewing and summarizing the annual Texas Academic Performance Report, or TAPER, as we call it. And we will also hold the public hearing, which meets the requirement of the Texas Education Code. On the right hand of the slide, you will see different components of this report, and they have been linked there for the convenience of our audience. So to kind of set the stage, as for the data that we're going to be looking at this evening, we want to take a look at our student profile. So you can see that we have the three years here from 2019-20 through 2022. That is looking at, if you remember, in 2019-20, that is the year that we left, actually, in March due to the pandemic. And so we have increased about 400 students since then with a slight dip in 2020-21. If you see the text in blue, that is actually looking at our current year of 22-23. At that PMS information, so you can see that we have increased enrollment for this year as well for 22-23. So there are some areas within our student groups and our student populations that have increased. For example, our Asian student group, as well as our emergent bilingual, has increased, continuing to increase. But we also see a decrease, for example, in our white student group. So when we look at the TAPER report, the TAPER report is not certainly new information. So we want to put this into context. The TAPER report is actually one of the last formal reports. It's a summative report of the information from last school year in 2021-2022. So as you can see, we're obviously in the spring semester of the 22-23 school year. So we're actually in the, what I'd call, action phases of looking at this data. So we're going to talk a little bit more about this tonight. So if you look at this table, you can see in the first column, the data section that is included in the TAPER. The second column includes who are our students that are actually included in that data, as well as in the third column is when that has already been addressed or previously reported. So, and just recently, actually, along with the Texas Academic Performance Report release, we had the school report cards that also align with that, and were just released. And you'll see that on our website as well. So when we are looking at this report, because we've looked at this information in many different ways, especially in our accountability report, sometimes we're struggling to say, what is different? What is new? What is something we can look at a little with a different lens? And so that's what we want to share this evening. So again, when we look at these, this information and this data, we have seen this as it comes out. So we, as a system, we look at all the different data and that information as it is released. For example, we look at the STAR reports, when we look at the accountability reports. That information is then actually used and acted upon in the development of our district improvement plan and our campus improvement plans. Like I said, we're already into that action phase in the spring of the 23 school year. So we certainly don't wait until this report is released. We're already acting on that. So when we also look at this, we are also addressing this information when we look at our leading measures and our formative reviews. And I believe even at the next regular board meeting, we'll be looking at some of this information in our Leading Measures Report. So as we take a different lens tonight and look at this, and I apologize, my glasses, it's one pair of glasses to see this, it's one pair of glasses to see that. So this graph shares the percentage of our students in third grade. I'm using this as kind of our example slide to speak through as we are going to look at the next couple of slides. But this is looking at the performance of 21-22, and it's looking at the percent of our students who took both reading and math STAR, and they met or exceeded the MEAT's grade level standard on both of those assessments. So I want to review kind of what does that mean? So the passing level is, we call that the approaches level, or the state calls that the approaches level. The next higher level, which is saying they, the student is really showing a strong knowledge of that course content and really ready for that next grade level, is at that MEAT's level. And then the highest level is that master's level. So this is that MEAT's level in between that we want to look at for the percent of students who met that in both reading and math. So since this is the first graph, let's kind of look across the bottom of the graph. You're going to see the state, the region, and we're a part of Region 13, which is about 50, I think, 57 school, public school districts, along with a few charter and private schools. Then you have our district, and then you have also the performance of each student group. Okay? So we're sharing this since 2019 because the landscape of state assessment honestly has been a little inconsistent over these last couple of years, right? So 2019 was actually our last normal year in comparison to 20 and 21. If you remember, in 20, we did not have STAR assessments. In 21, we did, but students were not required to come in and take those, so we had a decreased participation during that year. So we wanted to kind of show you the scope of what has happened over these last few years, right? So when we look at that, we're looking at the percent of students, again, for reading and math, the MEAT's level. And we know from the reports, not only just for us, but the reports that the Texas Education Agency and the Commissioner has shared with us, that math had endured a greater impact than reading due to the pandemic. Certainly, again, not just in our district, but across the state and across the nation as well. So as we look at this data over the next couple of slides, we're certainly going to see areas that not only are approaching our pre-pandemic levels, in some cases have exceeded the pre-pandemic levels, but we also know in transparency that there are areas that we need to have a continued focus for growth. So that is what we're going to be looking at this evening over these next couple of So in this one, you're going to see the same concept that I just discussed and set up for our fourth and fifth grade. So a couple of the celebrations that we see on these slides is our emergent bilingual student group in both fourth and fifth grade, as well as our Hispanic student group in the fourth grade. So just kind of a piece to think about that how, because sometimes I think we think we're certainly removed from the impacts of the pandemic, right? Some of these, for example, some of these fifth graders, and I think I mentioned this when we were talking about accountability as well, is during the year of the, when we left, these fifth graders were second graders. Then in third grade, in 20, they didn't take STAR. In fourth grade, they may or may not have, depending on if they actually came in to take it. So for some of these fifth graders, this was their, in 21-22, was their very first time to take a STAR assessment. So this slide actually shares the information for our sixth, seventh, and eighth graders who either took their grade level STAR or the end-of-course assessment, for example, our Algebra I.
So as Brenda mentioned, there are lots of components to the TAPER report. Another one of them, one of my favorite things to come talk to you about is really old graduation data. And so that's what we have. So talk about impact of the pandemic. Here, we are talking about the class of 2021. And so what I want to remark upon here is that we have a remarkable level of stability despite the challenges that students in these grades faced. So the thing I want to point out, you can see some red text there about TSI. So remember, that's scoring above a certain level on SAT, ACT, or the TSI assessment. And we saw a lower rate in our class of 2021. But if you think back, I warned you guys about this last year. These are our students who, in March of 2020, they were juniors, and they took the SAT, everyone did, at school the week before spring break, and then really never got another chance to take the SAT or ACT, right? It was incredibly difficult, especially in that fall of their senior year, to retest. And so, as expected, we saw a drop there in our students meeting that TSI cut point, because what we see is we get a lot of students on the first try, and then as students have that opportunity to improve their score retesting, we get more and more students above that threshold. So, and also their universities often were not requiring the SAT, and so they didn't have that incentive as well. One other number I want to point out is the very last row in this set of data, which is our graduates who are identified in special education that earned an advanced diploma. And you can see that that doubled, more than doubled, for our class of 2021, which is a huge celebration. I do want to tell you that in investigating this, because any time a number in our incredibly stable system doubles, we ask questions. And so what we discovered there is, there was a new law that went into place in 2020-21 that allowed art committees more flexibility as they were determining if students had met the requirements for an endorsement. And so our students' art committees took advantage of that opportunity, and had, we had more courses that could count toward endorsements for our students in special education. And so more students were able to earn those endorsements. And so that, again, is a big celebration. But there was some flexibility added legally that allowed for that to happen. So that was a statewide thing, but also something that we implemented quickly in Leander ISD. And then the last piece of data we want to look at is just an overall summary of staff members in Leander ISD. This percent of teachers is actually up from the prior year. So we had about 55.5% of our staff members that were teachers the year before. So more teachers. And the other numbers were relatively stable. It's pretty, again, we have a very consistent system, but we always like to see more, more staff members teaching our students every day. In conclusion, again, these are links for Leander ISD, and every campus has its own Texas Academic Performance Report. And the Texas Performance Reporting System on the TEA website is also a way to view this data a little more interactively. And as always, if you have questions, we are here. So we'll open for questions.
Board members, are there any questions?
So on Slide 3. Go to Slide 3.
Oh, wait a second, wait a second. We're going to have to stop discussion. We need to go ahead. We had a speaker signed up, and we're going to bring him up for his comment. Speaker number one.
Thank you. I just had a really, really quick comment when I saw the topic of the Academic Performance Report. This is an area that's very, very personal with many of the parents here. We want that focus to be on the academics, to be increased. I went through this report in detail. It's got some really good news in it, some really good stats in it, but also it's got some really great opportunities to be even better. That's one of the issues that we are struggling with all the time about how are we spending our money? Are we putting it in the right places to take advantage of those areas? I've got two kids who are in a special ed program. I've also got two older sons who've gone through the gifted programs, and I think that there are opportunities there that we can take advantage of some of those things, that people want those academic excellence-type things. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. That concludes our public hearing, like, comment portion. Is there anybody else that I missed for sign up? No? Okay. Then we'll move on to board discussion.
I was looking at Slide 3, the smaller table to the right, and it looks like each of those groups has increased quite a bit. And so it's just an area where, do we have the right resources that can help everybody succeed? Or what would you say some of the challenges might be, given the new numbers?
The question of, do we have the right resources? That is a collective conversation, I think, among many of us, as not only within our staff, but within the community as well. When we are looking at, for example, I'm going to use the emergent bilingual, which has increased tremendously, right? It is always something that we want to focus on and say, what are those needs? So, and when something is increasing at a rate to this extent, it is really trying to find that understanding. Maybe seeking understanding is what I'm thinking here of, to what are those additional needs? Obviously, it may certainly be needs as far as personnel, but many times it goes beyond that. And it's not just personnel that always fixes or addresses the, any concerns or challenges that may be arising. So it is really looking into, and I know that is something--
So it is really looking into, and I know that is something that we're looking to, we look at as far as when we look at our campuses and even our district improvement plans, as I stated before, about what are those needs with professional learning? What are those needs for student learning within these groups that are growing?
As our public forum comment mentioned, like, you know, this shows positive growth, and there's always opportunities for, you know, we always talk about continued improvement. As you look at this, as y'all study this data, where do you see our greatest opportunity for improvement?
I, when we look at this, and again, this has been through some collective conversations, is, I think we are, we are not strained, we are grounded in our core beliefs. We are grounded in our North Star of our graduate profile. To get there, when we look about, when we talk about skilled communicators for our, being our students for our, you know, within our graduate profile, those aspects, and collaborators and so forth, we ground ourselves, and I think about, I look up right behind us, right there, is that learning model. When we think about implementing that curriculum design, the implementation of our instruction, and implementing what's actually in our curriculum, our curriculum is very strong. And then the assessment part of that, and thinking about not just when we talk about STAR assessment that's feeding into the Tapper, but our entire assessment framework of how we look at informal assessments on a day-to-day basis that our teachers do to make those quick determinations about what a student may need next. That's rooted in all, in the yellow, green, and blue up there. So when I think about the improvements, is we're always looking at what improvements can we make to our curriculum? But also looking at what improvements can we make to that implementation in instruction. And so when we're looking at that, we are really thinking about the professional learning that we're providing. So in alignment to our graduate profile, and when we think about the deeper learning, for example, that's not just a simple term, that really strikes at the heart of those aspects within that graduate profile. So it's really providing that professional learning, maybe it is providing extra resources. I mean, when we think about our student success facilitators that are on campuses, when we think about the additional instructional coaches that have been added at the secondary level and so forth, it's to help provide the structure to implement each one of those areas. But it really comes down to, we've had a, what I'm going to call renewed focus, maybe, within our campuses even. So part of how all of that dances together, as I call it, is through a great focus in our professional learning communities that are on campuses. And many of our campuses this year, within their campus improvement plans, had a very renewed focus on those professional learning communities. Because at the heart of those, in high-functioning PLCs, all of that piece is surrounded by that focus on that student learning. So what is that, what are we using within our curriculum? How are we teaching this? What is it our students need to learn? How do we know they're learning? How are we going to assess that? That's at the heart of our high-functioning professional learning communities. And as I said, many of our campuses certainly have a renewed focus on that, and that was included. I'm sure you saw that as you reviewed the campus improvement plans as well.
So really quickly, knowing that STAR is going to be redesigned this year?
Yes, ma'am, it is. Talk about inconsistent landscape, right?
So that's kind of where I was going with this, is that we've got, you know, some wonky years with data because of COVID, and then the choice to take the test that one year, they may or may not have taken it. And then we had, it's still not, I think, super consistent, although looking at where LISD falls within our region and within the state, that is good news. Of course, next year, with the redesign, we're not comparing apples to apples anymore.
Correct. We'll all be starting kind of fresh, at the fresh start, right?
Okay.
At the starting line.
Yeah. So I'm wondering, you know, are they going to, you know, looking at this, and I know people see the grade or whatever, I guess, asking you guys, because you're the data queens, is how is that all going to formulate to be able to give an A to F rating? Because we know people look at that and say, oh, my gosh, it's a whatever, letter. And there's so much more behind it. So perception matters, of course, and we want to make sure that, I mean, if you dig into the data, you can see, we're actually doing pretty well. Of course, we know about the math, that, you know, during the pandemic, parents could pick up a book and read to their kids, but they weren't going to touch math. Like, come on, you know? So I'm thankful for that, but I'm curious about how the state is planning on merging those two data sets when they're different. Any ideas?
Want me to take that one?
I don't know how they're going to actually merge that. Now, so we have, so I'm going to come back to a statement you made as to, you know, there's a letter grade that comes out there, and when they see a letter grade, and then there's perception, right? Absolutely. So part of that is, it is our absolute responsibility to help educate, right, and promote the information. So we are all having the same information to make our decisions, right? So when we look at that, or sometimes I want to say maybe assumptions, but we want to ensure that our community has the correct information. And so this is going to be something that, and we've shared, I know with the board, we have shared information as to how our accountability system is going to be changing, some of the STAR redesign and so forth. And you'll be, actually, you'll be receiving that again in another week, because there's some changes again. But that is something we're also doing with our campus leaders, and we're starting to put things on our district website and so forth, to try to have more and more information coming out. It is going to be a different landscape. We do have our TA that is going to be sharing some information on, with the new accountability system, for an example, is if we apply the same performance from this past year to the new one, what would that look like? So they are going to be doing that later in the spring. Part of it also is, with the new STAR redesign that's actually going to feed that, is we have been working with our campuses. The STAR redesign is actually looking at questions that are much more like what is in the classroom. Because in our classrooms, we do not always assess with choose, please answer A, B, C, or D, right? It is, we give our students different opportunities to show that. So that is what they're trying to incorporate into the STAR redesign. And many teachers were a part of helping develop that. So in looking at that, it is going to be interesting, because when we think about, even in our own district here, when we think about the deeper learning and giving students voice and choice and how they show that, it doesn't totally give that, but it's starting to lean more toward that way, right? So it is going to be interesting for us to see, how does that actually look? And for two data people who like to dig in, the analysis of that with those new question types is certainly going to be interesting.
Well, and I was just going to add, so the accountability system, as Brenda mentioned, is also changing on top of everything else. And the Commissioner has said very clearly, and I think it's important that we start saying, that because of both of these big changes, the new STAR system and the new accountability system, although it will still have As and Bs and Cs, it is a whole new system, and we cannot compare to the prior years. So it is, in both ways, I would say, a refresh. There's a lot of re-norming in terms of what counts as an A, those sorts of things going on, sort of under the hood, that we're going to talk about a lot more as it becomes more finalized, because it isn't yet. But I think, I guess the good news is, if we change two things at one time, then maybe we get, maybe we'll have a year after that where it's the same. At least, I'm hoping. So it hasn't happened yet, where we have two years in a row that are the same, but I'm hoping for one. But yeah, it is a great point, and we're just going to have to keep an eye on both of those levers as they change.
But as we talked about earlier, regardless of the changes that occur with the actual formal assessment of the STAR, or within our state accountability, is keeping our eye on what is best for our students. And, like I said, looking at that learning model, looking at what we want within the graduate profile, and how do we get there?
The only thing, I think, more layered and complex, or maybe as equally layered and complex, is school finance, might be school accountability. So as we continue through vocabulary changes, accountability changing, STAR redesign, and then we have our measurements as well. You know, we have our strategic plan going in place to try to align our measurements. I will be curious, and the board will want to know, how is all of this aligning, right? We have thoughts of maybe this test might align better to what curriculum and deeper learning and critical thinking, so that might be positive, but we don't know. So if you could just continue to make sure, to give us those main points as we come in, I don't know, we might need an R-Star narrative or something, as we're trying to figure out how to explain accountability to our community. And I have to remind myself, you know, okay, so that's one data point, but we have these other ones. That doesn't really tell you what learning looks like in the classroom, what learning has occurred, right?
Exactly.
Or at least, that's not my understanding of what that test is used for. So still...
It is one assessment point.
One assessment point. So anyhow, thank you. Board members, anything else?
I think with the changes that happen, or that the state does, goes through their changes from year to year, or from four-year period to four-year per year, this puts into a good reason why we should have our, what we're building is the community-based accountability system, which is our own, which is going to be our measures, just, we can compare from year to year and kind of move forward that way, as opposed to, but, I mean, we'll still pay attention to what the state has, but we have our own measures that stay consistent.
It's the beauty of the "and," not the "or," right?
Yeah, so I have a question. How long has the current STAR test been applied? Like you said, there's going to be some changes to it. Do you know how long it's been?
The last one was 17, was when we came out with the, with this version, I believe, sir.
Yeah, that sounds right.
16, 17 was the last.
It's been called the STAR since 2012.
Right.
Yeah, it's been called the STAR since 2012, but we've had a lot of adaptation along the way. There used to be a modified version of the assessment, and then that went away. They've changed the way the alternate assessment works. So I do believe, though, I think you're right, and 2017 is about when it's been a consistent format. Yeah.
Actually, I looked into that, and 2016, 17, they did redesign it, but they didn't give any ratings. Then 2018, 19 is the first year they gave ratings. And then the following year, we had COVID. So really, this is, this is the first full year, 21, 22, that we've had, or actually the second full year. So 2018, 19 was the first one, and then 21, 22 is the second year. So really, this iteration, it's just really two years.
Right. And so when we look at it, so they switched over to our ratings of the A through F, and before that, it was, we looked at meet standards or improvement required, so they had a label, but not an actual letter grade.
I have just another quick question. Are we still using, or focusing, you said we've changed a little bit in the last year? Some people that I knew were wondering about the Bridges math, and there are difficulties with it. Are we still using that, or have we changed back to something else? Because there was something else also, so that's the math part, but on the reading side, some teachers also talked to me about phonics, that they had changed it to Phontis and Pennell.
All right. So if we're going to go there, that would be almost a different agenda, because it's about curriculum, not about STAR accountability. If y'all can figure out a way to answer that might deal with the agenda item, since it's a public hearing, I want to make sure y'all stay to agenda items. Is there any way to answer that, or would that be a...
It is part of our curriculum that includes the TEACs, which is what is assessed on the STAR and fed into the Texas Academic Performance Report.
That was amazing. But we can do more discussion on an actual agenda item. Let's figure out kind of what it is, you need to see, and we'll figure out where we can later get an agenda item that lets you further explore that. So we're all on the same page.
Well, and I might offer, as I know for sure, the next regular board meeting will be the leading measures data, and that might be a good time to talk about just general, you know, what's going on on campuses.
That helps. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. That concludes this discussion, public hearing on the Texas Academic Performance Report. And the public hearing, we will now move to the consent agenda. Board members, I need a motion to approve. I'd say a sever, but there's only one item on there.
I move to allow LISD administration to seek a waiver from TEA to request that remote homebound be provided to one student and counted for homebound funding purposes, and to count the student as in attendance when remote instruction is provided.
I second.
I have a motion from Anna, a second from Christine. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven ayes, no nays, motion carries. We'll move on to our superintendent report.
Thank you, Madam President. We had the good fortune, I think, last week of having the taste of Leander ISD, week before? Tuesday, this week. Yes, ma'am. We were not here last week, that's right. We'll get to that in a few slides. This is a great opportunity for us to gather student voice feedback on new items that are coming into our child nutrition program in the cafeterias. And so it's just always a great opportunity for our kids to run through there and let the adults know what they will eat and what they won't eat, so that we can prepare adequately. I wanted to share a little bit about some empowered staff that we have. We had them in this room yesterday, actually, and this is just one of three groups of registrars that were over here yesterday, engaging in a pretty comprehensive full PDSA cycle. And the things that they were addressing were, you know, how do we design meetings for registrars so that we can really learn together? How do we onboard new registrars as they come in? And then how do we find the right professional learning for registrars and make sure that they stay up to date? I bring this group to the table because they are oft ignored in the district, and honestly, we have not done a good job of looking after them and making sure that they are heard and that they get the learning that they need, especially, we have some significant turnover in this group. And so a group of our administrators led by John Graham brought them together and really had some powerful conversation with them about what it is that they need and how we can meet those needs. They are a critical group in the district because they collect all the data that then is reported to PEMS, and PEMS is how we get funded. And so, you know, we've got to make sure that we're empowering all of our staff members in the district. And so this just, for me, was a great example of one group that we don't often talk about, that we don't often recognize, but that are doing some really incredible work, often behind the scenes, often unthanked. And they get pulled in all kinds of directions, because they're in the front office of our campuses. And, you know, when other people are out, they get called to the front to do this and that and the other. And so they still have to turn out report cards, they still have to turn in data on time, they have deadlines. So I just wanted to give them a big shout out and thank John and his team for bringing them together and really listening to their voice. So moving on to safe and innovative learning environments, we did have some winter weather again this last week, as you all know. I just wanted to give you a quick update on that. We have some magnificent tree, had some magnificent trees in the district that got damaged in this, and really, that was the thing that created more of the mayhem this time than before. And so it's fascinating how different these extreme weather events are for us as a district. Every time you think you've planned adequately, and then it throws a curve at you and something different comes at you. So it was not necessarily... So it was not necessarily roads and things this time, although we had some of that. But then the downed tree limbs became a significant issue for us. And so the weather was good enough on Friday for us to come to school, but we could not quickly enough create safe pathways for our kids and our staff to walk to the buildings. And so we had incredible crews working extremely hard from Tuesday all the way till Sunday, over 920 hours clocked between them, making sure that they at least cleared safe paths. And so they managed to clear eight campuses completely, but we still have some remaining that just have branches pulled to the side that they're gonna work. It's gonna take about the next two weeks to get rid of all that. Costs about $90,000 for us to get all the rental equipment that we need to get all of that cleared up and then taken care of. So we did have issues at all 53 campuses, but I was extremely nervous last week, honestly, after our Christmas win event, that we were gonna have significant issues at some of our campuses. And I just want to give Joey and his team a huge shout out because they worked extremely diligently before it had, while it was here, and then afterwards to make sure that we didn't have that damage to our facilities. It was interesting today to listen to Brenda Evans at the City of Cedar Park talk about this two-hour window of as it was starting to melt and what happened at the city level and how things just started really going wrong. And that was what we were most nervous about, is that two-hour window. As it starts to melt and those, the water that's frozen in those pipes starts to melt and then drain out, then that's when you find out where the issues are. And so we were very fortunate this time that we didn't have any major damage at our campuses. So I wanted to talk to you a little bit about empowered student learning and a little differently this time. So this is, Faith is a member of my Superintendent Student Advisory Council. And this is a story of real student empowerment and connection. And so we got an email from Faith that started talking to us about the work that she was doing on flex time. So in SISAC, the students have self-selected work projects that they want to work on and they're in teams together. And one of those is working on flex time. And what they mean by that is, so like at Vista Ridge High School, they have Ranger Time. At Vandegrift High School, they have Viper Time or Pitt Time, yeah. And they have that pretty much at most of our high schools. But how it's managed is pretty challenging, right? Because you've got to make sure those kids get in the right place. You've got to make sure you know where they are. You've got to make sure they're not going out the back door. You've got to, you've got to make sure that they're engaged in doing the things that you want them to do in this flex time. So Faith is working on this with SISAC. So she emailed us and said, "I know these two kids at Vista Ridge, Adith and Jay, who are working on Ranger Time." And they have decided that they really want to keep Ranger Time, but in order to do that, so at Vista Ridge, they only have two days where they're allowed to move, right? The other days, they have to stay put in their, whatever classroom they're in at Ranger Time. And part of the problem is that even on those two movement days, the kids have to sign up on this form. But if you don't do it early enough, you can't leave. And it's kind of clunky and it's hard for the admin. So these guys decided they were gonna write an app to make this better and to make it work. So then Faith found out that they were doing this. So she connected to them and said, "Hold on a second. What you guys are doing for Ranger Time is what I'm trying to do in SISAC for Flex Time. And so is there any way that you can come and talk to the kids at SISAC about what you're doing for Ranger Time so that we can make it go district-wide? So that we can do it for Pitt Time, we can do it for all of these things?" And so it's just a beautiful story of, we didn't lay this on the table for them. We didn't ask them to do anything. They just saw a problem. They started making connections, they start solving the problem. And if we let them, they'll, I suspect, do a great job of putting this together and getting it done. So I will bring you updates on how this all works. And then the football goes over the goal line and then there's a touchdown and so we'll move on. Thank you.
All right. Board members, any questions? All right. We will go ahead and conclude that agenda. I move on to our discussion and action items. Student experience, our early childhood programs update.
Good evening, Madam President, Board of Trustees and Dr. Garing. We are very excited to be here. My name is Kendra Winans and I am the Senior Executive Director of State and Federal Programs, but I have the pleasure of also working with early childhood. So our purpose tonight was to share student experience. And when we're talking about our youngest learners, that's often through the eyes of the teachers and of the families and parents. So we do have some visitors here to give you some insight into that. But I know that there's been a lot of discussion and questions around early childhood centers. And so we are gonna try to weave through some of the benefits and thoughts that we have about why that's important and why it would even be a discussion. So we're gonna end with anything, any kind of questions that you have, we'll try to address. If there's anything additional that you need, then we will try to provide that to you. We are gonna start off with just the vision of our early childhood department because we think that's at the center of what we are trying to accomplish. It's young children develop, learn, and thrive in a play-based environment, which is rich in language, positive social interactions, and strong family partnerships. And so when we talk about an early childhood center, if you have a place where all of that is conducive to those things, to that vision, then you've really accomplished something. I'm gonna turn it over now to Erin Garner. She is our Senior Coordinator of Early Childhood and she's going to share a little bit more.
So good evening. Can you hear me? Good evening. Good evening. All right. Good evening. All right. Thank you for having me. This is something that I always enjoy talking about, but Kendra said we had to keep it to 20 minutes. So I'm gonna try really hard not to go on and on. So Kendra mentioned briefly early childhood communities, which is our current practice of how we work in Leander ISD right now with creating the best environments for our youngest learners. We currently have 17 of them throughout the district. And what you see in front of you are four components or cornerstones, if you will, of high-quality early childhood education and care. When we look at our communities and what we want to see there, these are four of the major components. So the first one is equity and access. What we are always excited about is that any family with a child under the age of five in Leander ISD can access at least one of our early childhood programs. And then our children can access their peers, their three- or four-year-old peers on campuses in high-quality education because we have early childhood communities. And I need to thank this board in advance for those. And we'll be talking a little bit more about what that looks like as we move forward. The other component is collective responsibility and inclusion. Usually, when we think of the word inclusion, we think about educating children of all abilities together to the greatest extent possible. And we mean that too. But the other part of inclusion that these early childhood communities offer us is that our teachers and our early childhood staff are all together and can collaborate and work together to support three- and four-year-olds first. So we like to say that a three-year-old is a three-year-old first, a four-year-old is a four-year-old first. And then after that, if they need bilingual education, if they need early childhood special ed, then we work collectively to support whatever these little ones need. Developmentally appropriate practices. You know, science tells us that these little ones learn very differently than RK through five. And we honor that in this district. One of the things we do that we've been working on for quite a few years is create, excuse me, creating an environment that is safe and exploratory and easily accessible for all of them. And then family engagement. It's vital, especially when you have a child who's three and four, that everybody comes to the table and is a part of this child's education. We like to say in the early childhood department that there's an expert triad. And that's the parent, who's the most influential teacher of those little ones. The teacher is an expert in their classroom. And then, of course, the child's an expert of themselves. A three-year-old can tell you what they like, what they dislike, what they're interested in, what they're not. So we honor all of that. So again, our early childhood communities help support these components and help us build the strongest early childhood education environments that we can. So who are we? When we talk about the early childhood continuum in LISD, we're talking about a prenatal to five. So prenatal, starting with our Parents' Teachers Program, all the way until a child enters kindergarten. And you can see that we have, that our families can enter, have different entry points into early childhood education. And all of these services that you see up here are offered in both English and Spanish. So Parents' Teachers is our early childhood family and child education program. All families, any family in LISD who has a child under the age of five can access the Parents' Teachers Program, whether that be the home visits, the personal visits, or any of the activities that happen every day right over here at the Parents' Teachers Center. We also have our campus-based programs, again, for our threes and our four-year-olds. Both of these programs, pre-K and early childhood special ed, a child must qualify for. And what's very important about our early childhood communities is that we have children who qualify for both pre-K and early childhood special ed. And because of these early childhood communities, we no longer have families who have to decide, "Do I not access pre-K because it's not here on my campus?" or vice versa. And then this slide showcases the collaborations we have with two organizations in our community. Acts of Love, that is a nonprofit that offers free childcare to our teen parents in the district. They're located right across the street here. And then we also have a collaboration with Head Start. Head Start is located right in front of Comacho, close to Acts of Love. And they have early Head Start, which is for six weeks to three-year-olds. And then they have three-year-olds that they will have at that center. Then our other collaboration with them is that any of their four-year-olds that they have in Head Start are duly enrolled in our pre-K and are on our campuses. And then this slide shows you that families can access different programs at the same time. You might have a family in Parents' Teachers while having a child in pre-K and that child's receiving early childhood special ed. And I could click through all of these because there's many different ways that this can all go together, but you can see that the connection is deep and robust. So in the fall of 2020, I don't know if y'all remember where you were then, is the first semester, the first time that Leander ISD offered full-day pre-K4. And so we're a few years out of that and that we're starting to get some data. So the data that you see in front of you is just a quick snapshot of how our four-year-olds, kiddos who were in four, pre-K4 last year, did on their kindergarten, beginning-of-year reading assessment. And then the one on the right is math. So if you look at the, at the middle bar, it shows you that kiddos who attended pre-K and what we can see is how they did compared to their peers who were eligible for pre-K but didn't attend, for whatever reason that might be, and to children who were not eligible for pre-K. So we've got that in reading and math and it gives us a great starting point for where we are and what we have to work towards. So last year, last fall, we started pre-K3. And again, we have this board to thank you, to thank for bringing in 300 three-year-olds. There were a lot of different feelings about that. And what this graph shows you is how our kiddos who were in pre-K3 last year did on their Ready Set K assessment this year as four-year-olds compared to children who did not, their peers who did not attend pre-K3. So you can see it's pretty positive and pretty exciting. All right. So you often get to hear from Kendra and I, but we're really excited tonight that we have, we have some teachers here to share their experiences. So let me bring them up and then we'll introduce them.
We are so excited. Thank you, teachers. Yes, applause.
All right. So we're gonna start over here first. I want to introduce Syracuse Johnson. She's a longtime pre-K teacher in this district. She has been a, she was a pre-K3 teacher last year, first year to do that. She is still here and, that's right, and she looped up as pre-K4 teacher this year. And then over at this table, we have Coco Estrada and what her instructional assistant, Sherry Stewart, or as we like to say, our significant other in the classroom. And they both are at the Plain Early Childhood Community and work with our little ones. They are inclusion support teachers. So our little ones who are in early childhood special ed, but also qualify for pre-K. So we're gonna start with Sarah.
Good evening. As Erin said, my name is Sarah Johnson and I'm currently teaching pre-K4 at Giddens. I've taught in the district over 20 years with another five in another district. Half of that time has been devoted to pre-K. I was actually part of the very first pre-K community in 2014 that started at Giddens. We also were part of the first outdoor learning centers that we began in our courtyard, which is a huge accomplishment of mine because I love the outdoors, but anyway, aside from that. So tons of experience with that age. And two years ago, Erin came to me and asked, "Would you be interested in doing pre-K3?" And I was, amazingly. I didn't think I would, but I was. I was willing to do it. And if you've taught as long as I have, sometimes you need something to kind of jumpstart you. And I was at that point where I was ready to do that. I didn't exactly know what I was getting into with that because it was, it was a learning experience. I'll say that much. I'll get into it more in a little bit. But I jumped into it. I had the shakeup, as I said. It wasn't easy. There were a lot of ups and downs to it. To give you a little perspective on the age group last year, these were children that were born around 2018. They were turning two when the pandemic hit. So they were, for the most part, homebound without much social interaction. A lot of those children that I had last year were English-language learners. So they didn't, they spoke little to no English, many of them. So their parents put their trust in us last year with those babies, basically. Some were two when they started because of the cutoff being September 1st, since we start in August. So basically, my biggest obstacle at the start of that year with that group of three-year-olds was making sure that I got 15 to 18 three-year-olds, because that's about how many I had, from point A to point B. So, and that was multiple times throughout the day. So that was very stressful. I could not have done it without my instructional assistant. So I'm glad that there's one here to represent because that was, is crucial to our job as teachers. to represent because that was, is crucial to our job as teaching pre-K. Basically, my ultimate goal was to just keep them smiling, happy, laughing, playing, get them fed, and then get them home safely. And I'm proud to say I didn't lose one at all during that year, and most left happy and exhausted. There were glitches to it. Some of them, toilets not short enough, sinks too high, needing a diaper-changing area because some were not potty-trained. So that was huge. At the, at the end of last year, I was asked if I would do it again, and I actually said yes. So I was willing to do it again despite all of those obstacles. But unfortunately, Giddens, their pre-K3 program was taken away. So that's why I ended up switching back to pre-K4. However, a lot of those students that I had looped up with me. So they were given the choice, the parents were given the choice, but all of them came back into my room. So this year, on my roster, half of them were ones that I had last year. And I worked with those children, those threes, last year from day one to the very last day. I mean, it was a lot of social-emotional development, socialization, playing with each other, asking, talking, expressing themselves, a lot of that. And this year, having that same group back, as well as new ones, you know, half of them are also brand-new to the program, was unbelievable. I mean, a lot of those non-talkers that I had, or that had very little English, are now expressing themselves in full sentences, having dialogue, playing, just, it's unbelievable. The language growth, like I said, off the charts. They just blossomed. And that group literally could run my room from day one when they started. And they not only were able to do that, but they were able to just take those new ones under their wing. And, and they kind of had that empowerment of saying, oh, no, this is what we do, and that's what we do, and here's where the bathroom is. So it was just a huge, you know, thing to have that. So as someone who would, who actually taught the pre-K3 program, I would highly encourage more. I would like Giddens to have one back, since it was taken away, because I would do it again, because it was so worth it. So, but I do enjoy having the loop-up. That was, that was the first time I've ever had that, so that was a great experience. And that's it.
I just wanted to say, we didn't just take things away. But I'm going to loop, loop back with why we're talking early childhood centers, because there isn't enough room. And by state law, we have to provide a full-day program for four-year-olds. Three-year-olds, they want you to provide, and they give you half-day funding for a half-day program. Where there was space, we filled them up as best we could. But I would say that's been another challenge. Each year, we say, how many three-year-olds and where could we put them? Because you see the data, and we believe in it. And so I think that should be a part of the discussion about why would we want a center for, where we could have all these three-year-olds? We had over 300 on the list, and we're only able to place about 120. So, just to say that. Okay, I'm going to stop talking and let y'all go for it.
Wait, I want to make sure we're clear, though, because you said early childhood centers. You're talking about the things we're going to talk about later in the bond.
Yes, the long-range planning. When, when you were talking about that, I was just trying to weave it through.
Just want to make sure we're all in the same vocabulary. All right, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Coco Estrada. I'm the early childhood inclusion support teacher at Gymplane Elementary. I work closely with Sherry. Introduce yourselves, Sherry. I'm sorry, I already introduced you.
I'm Sherry, I'm Sherry Stewart. I am Coco's
Amazing.
amazing inclusion support instructional assistant at Gymplane Elementary.
We are honored to be here tonight to share our story, the story of how we implement inclusive best practices in our early childhood community. Sherry and I are both new to these, these positions, and we accepted the challenge of providing pre-K students who qualify for special education services the supports and accommodations necessary to promote independence and self-reliance, and to equip them with the tools to successfully participate and fully access learning in the least restrictive environment.
With the help of the early childhood community, our ever-supportive early childhood department specialist, Ms. Leah Osborne, and our school principal, Ms. Erica Cruz, we felt empowered to meet the challenges of supporting our youngest students to achieve their full potential.
We couldn't be more grateful to our principal, Ms. Cruz, and the administration team who helped remove the barriers in order for us to attend to this challenge. They have trusted us, or they have trusted our expertise to make adjustments to the learning environment that we, knowing that we always keep students first in every instructional decision that we make. Before the school year started, we reviewed each student's individualized education programs and current needs to create the first of our 1 million modifications to our schedules. We aligned students' schedules by coordinating with all early childhood and related service providers, such as the speech therapy, occupational therapy, physical therapy, and others. We held revision hours to reflect updated services. We put in place a data collection system to serve as our basis for informed decision-making. We made connections with the families and developed reciprocal partnerships with them. We collaborated with the pre-K general education teachers on the classroom organization's systems, routines, structure, and environment to ensure that all students are getting what they need. We had a solid foundational system to start on day one.
As the school year progresses, at every grading period, we revisit these schedules, review student performance, review the needs, and review the progress. Then we make adjustments to schedules, 100 million times, supports and accommodations as necessary. Coco provided a data collection system and taught all of us how to use and implement the IEPs and strategies like visual aids, assistive technology devices, and behavior scaffolds and reinforcements, and then really trusted my feedback, as well as our entire team's feedback, to increase or fade support, and/or increase their time in the general education settings. At the beginning of the year, the data collection and communication among the entire team was daily or even multiple times throughout the day, until we got closer to the best fit for each student. Aiming to meet them exactly where their appropriate challenge was. We all had to be flexible and really embrace that this would be a year of challenge and learning, because we were all dedicated to the kid's success. It meant a lot to me that Coco valued and respected my sometimes passionate opinions, as we worked really hard to do best by our kids, even when it's hard on the adults in our system. Because sometimes it's hard as adults to adjust to the way we have always done things.
Thank you, Sherry. To bring us to the present, after a semester of providing inclusion support for our students in the least restrictive environment, we are now celebrating the accelerated progress that we have made. Currently, we have two students who are moving up to kindergarten with the least amount of support, and we have another that we are deliberating on recommending to be fully included in the general education classroom with speech-only support. It is nerve-wracking for us teachers to let go of these precious students, having the fear of, what if? Will she survive in the classroom together with her typically-developing peers? However, with dedication and intentional collaboration among the members of the early childhood team, related service providers, and of course, the parents, we feel confident that our students will be in a program that serves them best. It is important to know that none of the progress of our student is accredited to one person on the team. It is a collective responsibility and collective commitment.
It is a team effort indeed, and Gymplane embodies that idea. While our primary focus is on students we were previously identified with special education service, we work closely with the pre-K teachers. When I'm in their classrooms, I do not only support students with IEPs, I support all students. I make know and collect data of students who may need early, urgent, and appropriate interventions. We meet as an early childhood team, and together, we brainstorm ideas to make a plan to support these students. We help pre-K teachers create and implement resources and systems to address the social, emotional, physical, and academic needs of each one.
We aren't there yet. We have more room for growth and improvement, but we do have a better understanding of how meaningful inclusion in early childhood looks like. We feel that we know how to finish this year strong, and that we will start stronger next year with a vision of inclusive early childhood communities in sight. With this said, I fully believe that every early childhood classroom should be an inclusive classroom. Thank you again for letting us share our story.
So what about a child's life before they are three? What about the first 1,095 days? By the time a child is three, 80% of their brain is developed, and that's where our Parents as Teachers comes in. Our Parents as Teachers program is located right over here. We started it in 1998. This district was very progressive. And we focus on positive parenting. We focus on child development and family well-being, all while we are building trusting, reciprocal, and continuous relationships and partnerships with our families. So, so often, people think, oh, Parents as Teachers, it's really cute. And they have little ones, and it's really cute, and it's family engagement. But it's really, it's so much more than that. And so we have a few numbers up here that might help people get a better understanding of what we do. There are nine staff members over at Parents as Teachers. We have a registered nurse and seven parent educators. One of our parent educators is devoted completely, completely to our center-based activities and runs all of our playgroups, our, our classes, and talks to every single parent and child that shows up every day. So the total families, now this is from 2122, because we're not done with this year yet, but we served 173 families through the center, and 91 more families who received personal visits. So those are visits in the home. Total children served was 529. Again, 428 of those through the center, and another 101 who received personal visits. And then our total personal visits were 880 in-person and 72 either phone or video calls that we did with families. Those are either monthly or bimonthly, and it's depending on what the family needs. We also work as a resource referral, right? We can't do this by ourselves. So that resource referral number you see up there, 86, that's just for the 91 families that we saw in the home, because we keep track of those referrals. That referral could be to someplace in the district like Childfind, or to pre-K, or it could be to WIC, or a mental health association, a food pantry, the list goes on. We need to do a better job of those informal conversations we have with our families at the center every day, because so often, we refer those families also to a resource, and just after seeing that many families through the day, we don't always remember what we've done. We offered 391 group connections last year, so those are classes and playgroups that we offered, health screenings for those 91 families that received personal visits. They also received a health screening for their little one. And 84 of the 91 families received a developmental screening for their little ones. So that's when we look at the language, cognitive, physical, social-emotional development, and refor, refer out if we need to. Then we have four big family engagement events every year, and when we compile all the numbers, had well over 1,000 attendees. We know how to have a good time with families at Parents as Teachers. So there's a lot of work that goes into that, and our parent educators, they work hard and they connect with families. So we are also very honored tonight to have two families here that started out with Parents as Teachers, but can also talk about other early childhood programs that they have connected with in the district. So sitting next to me is Autumn Abear. And over there with Kendra is Ana Daniela Hernandez Gomez. And I did it right. So, all right. So they're just going to share their experiences with what early childhood programs they have accessed and how it's impacted their family and their children. And we'll start with Autumn. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Autumn. She really likes to say my last name. So I was a teen pregnancy in high school. So I come from, you know, a different perspective on that. So I started, you know, right from the beginning at 17 years old. You know, I, I was the editor of my yearbook, so this was like, obviously, not in the cards. So I had, I went to my counselor, and I was like, hey, I don't know how I'm going to finish the school year. And she said, let me connect you to Parents as Teachers. And I don't know where my life would have been without that. Bonnie, I don't know if I like, I like, want to cry about it. I've like, done this conference before, so I'm like, so silly. I don't know. Bonnie came to my high school, and she came and talked to me in the very beginning, and she just made me so comfortable. And I'm just so blessed to have Bonnie in my life. Anyway, after that, you know, I graduated on time, everything was great, and then I, what is wrong with me?
She's doing a great job.
I participated in infant massage at the center. I was at the center all the time. I went to infant massage. After that, they moved us to terrific, no, baby sing and sign. So that's when we introduced, you know, sign language at home. And after that, we did ter-
Terrific twos.
Not terrible twos. Terrific twos. And then I went into the preschool academy program that was with the coordinator of the whole program, Emily. And after that, my child went into pre-K4 in Baghdad Elementary. He had Mr. Chaney, which was life-changing, and he was amazing. Coming from, you know, starting my experience with Parents as Teachers as a teen pregnancy, and having that whole experience was just, it empowered me to empower my children. That's kind of where like, I want to come from with this, is that Parents as Teachers gave me the tools to know how to teach my kid, to know what's important for them to know, to know. Yeah. You know, when we send our children to school, I mean, he's in kindergarten now at the same school. When we send our children to school, they learn in school. When they come home, they are still learning. So for me to be educated as a parent, like, it is just really empowering to know that I'm confident and I'm patient. Yeah.
Autumn has two beautiful little boys, and she's the most amazing mother. I always have to be cautious here, you know, amazing parents aren't because of Parents as Teachers, right? Amazing parents is because somebody partnered with a parent and let them see their strengths and what they're able to do. So she had two go through Parents as Teachers, and then asked me, should I say that I couldn't send one to pre-K3 this year because it wasn't there? And I said, yes, you can say that. It's okay.
Yes.
We didn't take it from her.
They did offer, they did offer that, you know, half-day, the first half of the day or the second half of the day for him, and I just- or the second half of the day for him, and I just decided, you know, I'm not going to go to the school three times a day. But he will be going into pre-K 4 next year, and for the perspective of having them in pre-K 4, my child did it last year when he was in pre-K 4, and it just gave him the opportunity to have those social, emotional skills that he wouldn't have done otherwise, because I am low-income. And it's not, you know, just sending them off to daycare at all, at all. My child, my first child's name is Chris. He's always been really advanced. He's always, because of the tools that I've been given. He's always been really advanced. So in pre-K 4, you know, like, they're doing their ABCs, and they're writing like, an A in class, but like, I know that he is like, on the next level. You know, he's writing those words, he's writing his name, and all these other children were not at the time. And, but, the parts that he lacked were the social, emotional skills. And I wouldn't have had the opportunity to, you know, help him in that area by having him at home, so, yeah. Is there anything else I should add?
I think that's good.
I think it's good, okay.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ana Daniela Hernandez, and I just can tell you that my husband and I, we are immigrants, we don't have any social, right? And I remember the first day when I arrived to Parents as Teachers, my mom came from Mexico, and it was super tiny, and she has to move back. We have no family at all. I was petrified, super scared that I didn't know what to do with this baby, right? And thanks God, I started with them, and as the same, I mean, I went through the infant massage, nutrition classes, terrific twos, pre-K academy over there. My daughter Sofia is a wonderful student. She goes to dual language. I have three beautiful kids. The second one, I lost a baby. They were a huge support for our family. I've been through stay-in-bed pregnancies, huge support, wonderful visit from Ms. Cindy, Ms. Emily with Sing and Sign, Storytime's bilingual, because they have it in English and Spanish. For people like others, we didn't have a lot of money. They have also toys that we can lend, and the books, I mean, it's just been wonderful. My second kid, because they do the screening, you know, and the milestone, they could identify that he was not hearing. So for me, it was shocking, right? But it was great, because we can, he can have the perfect intervention, you know, right on time. So my kids went to Baghdad, to, what is the name of the program? With the, with the special... Special education, right? With my third kid, I love them because it was inclusion. I had a very hard pregnancy. They told me to terminate my pregnancy, which I couldn't. My little girl was born with cloth feet, right? And we went through all of that. I received the support from me and my baby, and it was wonderful to see the inclusion that they have for her and for me, because it was different, right? And you feel so welcome, you know, totally welcome. And after that, the same, it was the milestone and everything, and then she was diagnosed with selective mutism. So, she started right on time again, with all the help. Now she is in third grade, and she can speak, you know, and she can dance. I mean, she went through the surgeries and everything, great support from all of them, and for me, it's like, my extended family, you know, because of the tools that they empower my kids, first of all, you know, because we all want the best for our kids, you know, and I don't know how could I have done it without them, you know? And see that your kids start school and start the early intervention, and they are more ready, you know? That is just a wonderful program that I wanted to see, like, the more people can go through this, because it's totally free, you know? And they get prepared, I mean, it is, it is amazing, and it's for both, you know? It is great for the kids because of the social skills, it's great for the parents, because all of us, that we are moms, and, or dads, you know? And sometimes you feel overwhelmed, you know, you don't know what to do with them, with, you think that is something is off, and with this community, you feel welcome, to feel that somebody understands, it's the same path that you are walking, that you are not alone. And if you are good, your kids are going to be even better, you know? And I just love them very, very much.
So, we'll open up to any questions. I do want to thank everyone for really sharing. We went over this over there, and there were no tears, so I'm not sure. I'm looking here like, "Uh," but you can tell how much it means to them and all the experiences, so I really appreciate them for sharing their story from their viewpoint. Y'all are free to...
Do y'all have any questions?
Do you have any questions for...
Before we do questions, can we have all of our speakers and supporters here for this item? Because I saw more supporters coming. Can we all stand up, and can we just honor y'all with applause, please? Alright, board members, any questions?
I just have a question about programs. So you talked about being a teen mom and the, going to Parents as Teachers, but with Acts of Love, would that be an option now, instead of, I mean, Parents as Teachers would always be there, but to help with schooling and all of that, would Acts of Love be more of the avenue that you will take if it was there when you were accessing the services?
Acts of Love was in service when I was a teen parent. I did not take advantage of them, because I had the opportunity to stay home with my child, that's the only reason. I did, you know, cross those avenues of, should I go, you know, to work? And then eventually, I did go back to college, I'm in college right now. So, when I did cross those avenues, it was just my child was too old, and then I had to go into Head Start qualifications, and then I just took different routes. But Parents as Teachers provided, connected me to those services. Yeah.
And what are you getting your degree in?
Education, sorry, I don't know, I don't know.
I don't so much have a question, as I just wanted to say thank you for coming and sharing what these programs have done for you, and what services you were able to access. I'm somebody who's lived in this district for almost 20 years, and I did not know all of this. I didn't know all of the services that were available, or all of the things that our communities are able to access, and to hear it directly from you who are actually utilizing it, and you're part of this community, is amazing, so I just really wanted to say thank you.
I had a comment and a question. My first comment, as y'all know, my son was in ELE, and I can relate a lot to your stories, and our Special Education Department for Early Childhood seriously saved him. I'm proud to say he's going to graduate next year from Special Education, because of the programs and services, and the support that you have given our teachers and our staff, and parents as well. My next question is to Erin and Kendra. So these early childhood centers, right, there, we're talking about them, we're seeing the need for them. I'm curious to know, like, what is your vision for them? Because this is going to be a topic coming up, it's coming tonight. And I'm just wondering, what does that vision look like? We know we've got Parents as Teachers, we know we've got Acts of Love at Head Start, but what do you envision, per se, one center can offer, and what it looks like, and how will we expand to ensure that we're affecting and breaking down those barriers, so everyone in our community is aware of these services? Because it's not only Parents as Teachers, like I said, early intervention is huge, and we can save our district, and I hate to say this, a lot of money if we, if we get our children there, and my son is a great example, and so is yours, Ana. So what are you, I'd like to know, what do y'all envision, so we can be able to go back to our community and be like, "This is this, this is what they're going to do, and this is how we can expand on it."
So I was going to see who was going to hit the green button first.
Mine's been on the whole time. So, so, I think it's important, and I think everybody's learning that, when we say an early childhood community, that is early childhood special ed and pre-K, right? It's everybody together, it's all threes and four-year-olds. So what I envision is just that, it's a world for young children. You know, we're really good at, at creating or building high schools to meet the learning needs of, you know, children, or, not children, kids in high school. We've got middle school, which is a great bridge between elementary and high school, and we're very used to building beautiful K-5 campuses, right? But there's also an environment needed for threes and fours. So what I see is a world where they can access many of the things by themselves, the toilets, the sinks, the cafeterias, you know, their classrooms, outside looks very different, right? But also the supports that are on those early childhood centers, which would be, I would love to have Parents as Teachers, you know, at least at one of them. This year, we do have, Parents as Teachers has expanded, and we have a room at Fabian Elementary, and we're running playgroups for families there, to bring Acts of Love in, to see what else we could do with Head Start, right? So just to build up as many services as we can for threes and fours, but also for families. How can families come in there and learn from one another, or be able to ask questions about parenting, or how to support their children, and have it all right there?
And so I would add, in addition, have a Childfind area, evaluators that are really geared towards, you can talk to a diagnostician, a speech pathologist, LSSP, and to be able to have the skills for the littles compared to maybe a high school student, it's a big difference, and to have a team of individuals on those communities that are really geared towards little children, and evaluating little children. Got to have a nurse, hearing and vision screening, access to other programs, so really encompassing everything, so that it is, it's all about access, and they don't have to go to Parents as Teachers and then over here, and then graduate over there. Transition is a part of our lives, and we know that happens, but the more one-stop-shop that we can provide for our families, where they just come in, and it's just a smooth transition from one program, and the resources are all there.
You know, most parents of three and four-year-olds, they are out looking at early childhood daycare, childcare, right? And the environment can very much make the decision for, do, does it look like it's a welcoming place for that child? Is it a safe place? Is it a stimulating place, right? It's the same thing that we want to do with the growing number of three and four-year-olds we have in this district. And I just always have to say, we've got to include the families, right? Because stronger families are stronger schools, or stronger communities.
I think that's another comment I want to add, is I've gone to some of these Parents as Teachers events. Y'all, you want to talk about family engagement? Parents show up there, and, I mean, I'm talking hundreds of parents, so I'm just saying, Dr. Garing, family, they know how to work family engagement over there. Their rock and roll, your rock and roll read event, I...
Roll and Read.
I was calling it Rock and Roll Read.
It was Roll and Read.
Hey, I can bring rock and roll next, this year. But I, I think that event stuck out in my mind, because y'all had the Rotary Club there giving, you know, eye exams and glasses. You had a car seat with Williamson County Emergency Medical Service System, I don't know what their name is, I'm sorry. But it was the individuals of families from all over the district, and I mean, every walk of life, and not only did they bring the child and Parents as Teachers, but they brought their siblings, and so you had leaf set up with books. Like, I was just so impressed, because I've been an ex-PTA person, and it's so hard to get people at an event at 5:00 PM, but y'all did it. So, good job.
Thank you.
Well, thank y'all so much. Can I say, y'all are such an inspiration, complete empowerment. I see parental empowerment, and I am so thankful that y'all came to tell your story and share it with the board. Thank you. And if you do not realize it, it touched us all. You can tell by the amount of sniffing that is going on, as we're also trying to speak. So thank you so much for coming out this evening.
Alright, I am told we need to take a break. Board members, just so you know, we do have some guest speakers, but we also have an agenda item to get to before we get to our guest speakers. Our guest speakers should begin at 8:55, we're going to try to get them up here earlier, though. It's 8:35, we'll take a 10-minute break, we'll be back at 8:45. It's 8:35, we'll take a 10-minute break, we'll be back at 8:45. So this would be motions to put those next steps into action. The first item, A, is consideration of the creation of an Audit Board Committee and appointment of members. If there's no discussion, I need a motion.
You and Trish.
Okay.
Go ahead. Here we go. Consideration of the creation of an Audit Board Committee and appointment of members, I move that the board create an audit committee and appoint the following members of the committee. I further move that Shawde Fashakon is named the Chair of the Audit Committee. And then keep going? Oh, and the members are Trish Bode, President Trish Bode, and Anna Smith.
I second. Okay, that was Anna, who, who did the motion then, I'm sorry?
I did.
Anna did the motion, and who did the second? Yeah, okay, it was really quick.
She's ready.
Yeah, fine, see. As, John, no board members, this is kind of the structure we already had for our audit liaison that we were working, we're just now formalizing this into a committee. Okay, if there are no other discussions, then I need a motion.
I just did.
A motion, yeah, I have a motion, a second. Then I need a vote, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Six eyes, nay? A nay, okay, and then, oh.
Five eyes.
She's not here.
Where is she?
So then we have one absent. All right, we'll move on to the next item.
I move that the board outsource the function of an internal audit for the district as proposed.
I second. I have a motion from Gloria, second from Anna, is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Six eyes, no nays, one absent, motion carries, next item.
I move that the board direct the audit committee to review and make recommendations for changes to policy governing the function of audit for the district in conjunction with the Board Policy Committee, and bring recommendations back to the full board for approval.
I second.
I have a motion from Gloria, second from Christine, any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Six eyes, no, is there any nays? Okay, then we'll have an absent. All right, she's like, wait, what? All right, motion carries. Does that, we have one more item? Okay.
I move that the board direct the audit committee to work with administration to prepare an RFQ for internal audit services for the district and bring a recommendation back to the full board for approval.
Second.
I have a motion from Christine, second from Shawde. Any discussion? Okay, then can we raise our hands if you approve? All right, seven eyes, no nays, motion carries. All right, it is now 8:48, we're ahead of schedule by a few minutes, and we're gonna move to our next agenda item, which is the discussion of the Citizens Facility Advisory Committee, or CFAC, and Long Range Planning Committee, LRPC, recommendations, and other items related to the possible future bond election.
Good evening, Madam President, Board of Trustees, and Dr. Gearing. We are back again tonight. We were just here Tuesday night for our workshop on the alignment of the Citizens Facility Advisory Committee and the long-range planning items. We're excited to have with us our co-chairs for our Citizens Facility Advisory Committee. But before we get started, we did wanna follow up with a couple of items from Tuesday. I know, Madam President, you asked Mr. Graham about some security items, and we said that we were still looking into pricing. And so we do have those prices now, we were able to work on that in the last 48 hours. And so that would be an additional 4.4 million, I wanna make sure I get that right. While we were looking for those particular items, we did do one final review of all of the items that came forward to CFAC initially, just to make sure there wasn't anything else we wanted to bring forward. And we did find one item that we do wanna bring to your attention that was inadvertently left off Tuesday night. And that was about almost 20 million, 19.5 million for buses. And I do apologize that that was left off, that was an oversight, it should have been included. So I do apologize for that one, but there was, it's about 80 buses for general education, another, I got my notes here, 45 buses for students who receive special services through special education. And then, of course, cost to install those cameras on those buses. So again, we will get you all of this in writing. I do apologize that that was not on one of those, I just wanted to clear that up. Thank you.
Can I ask a question about that real fast? Okay, so the buses that you're talking about, are these replacing buses that are aging out? Not an addition?
Correct.
Got it, thank you.
There are nine growth buses for growth, but 125 replacement. And we did have one other item that's on the screen right now that y'all had requested about Leander High School Phase 1. And so y'all wanted a little more detail, and we've outlined the area that would impact on Leander High School campus. And of course, you can see on the right, the various areas that will be included in this scope of work. And so, and we have met with the campus, and they're very excited and happy that this is being considered.
So, a couple of questions. The, this that you're showing us is not an addition to what we've already discussed. The only thing that's an addition to what we already discussed is what? What is extra?
This item that you're seeing on the screen was a line item on Tuesday. There was just a request for more specifics about what does Phase 1 construction involve and entail. That's what this is right here. So when we asked for a consideration for Phase 1 construction, it would be for this bluish part that Jimmy has up there on the screen for all of those items. The item that I mentioned a moment ago that we did not bring up on Tuesday was buses. And again, I do apologize.
And that would be an additional item?
Yes, ma'am.
And that total amount is?
19.5.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
And the 4 million that you mentioned for security, that's not an additional that you're recommending or bringing forward? Or is that an addition? I just wanna make sure we know all the additions, so we're...
Yes, that's an addition over what was shown Tuesday night.
Okay.
And the Phase 1, the 31 million that is included in Phase 1, that also includes the design for the rest of the facility, different phases, so it can be completed over the next three years, design work.
So what is that total then now? And I, I understand this is a bit different than the way we've done it before for so many reasons, including the fact that we are getting the security updates that we need to be getting last minute, you're trying to get the prices and get those to the board. So I apologize, because I know we prefer to have these ahead of time, but...
It's 818.6 million.
Okay. All right, do y'all have any other presentations? Or do you want us to open it up to questions? Or do y'all have any statements y'all wanted to do? What was y'all's pleasure, no? Okay. Then we'll go ahead and open it up to questions. Unless, Jimmy, did you wanna say something? Okay, all right, questions?
I have a question about the LHS master plan, because there are other things on CFAC's list for LHS. There's the roof repairs and the barricades for the band pad. Those are separate from this Phase 1, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Can you also explain a little bit about the phases? Because it sounds like we're getting this part, but there's still more of Leander High School to do. So I know we had on Monday, I can't remember my days anymore, the LHS master plan community conversations, which were awesome, by the way, our students rock. But I'm trying to understand, so we've got Phase 1 here, what does the next steps look like? Are there seven phases, eight phases, another phase? Like, what is, can you give me some explanation? And I know y'all met with the architects, like, a little bit of an update.
Sure. The, as we move through the master planning process with the committee, you know, we anticipate bringing forth a full recommendation in May to June timeframe. And at that point, you'll know the entire scope of what else is gonna be done and what's being recommended. At that point, you still don't know what phases until you actually get in design to understand what has to be sequenced, how you have to sequence it. So you, because you've got 2,400 students and teachers in this building, so you just can't do it all. So you've gotta strategically move through the building, doing different sections to allow the movement. And so we anticipate, if this does move forward, then shortly, you know, we'll start design, and then, at that point, the master plan will be completed, and we'll start the design, and we'll be able to lay all this out and really understand what's needed and how it can be done. And then, of course, if the board moves forward, and, you know, we'll just assume three years from now, you're gonna be going back out, you'll know exactly what phases and how much everything will be. And so it won't be unknown at that point, but we'll know it then.
Okay, so, quick question for the team that's up there. Thank you guys so much for coming back, I know it's another late night for y'all, so. It's almost over, it's almost over. I just wanted to, to, one of our citizens' comments tonight was something about understanding that her and her children did a playground audit, which I so appreciate all of that work. And I know that you guys had discussed some of the, the shade structures and the ADA access for playgrounds. I wanted to know, are, were those items included in those Tier Ones? And I think Kara is probably the best one, is, she's like, she's my recess girl, so I know, I wanna be sure that we're capturing, because we wanna, we, we wanna make sure our kids can play safely.
So I don't know that actually a lot of that made it through the elementary committee this time. The last one did include shade structures, it did include some playground equipment. But I believe what was brought from the elementary subcommittee, you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, there were some playground upgrades for specific schools, but I think that was what was in their top tiers.
I was just gonna say, the HVAC projects that are in the, the recommendations, those included replacement of that playground equipment on those campuses.
Okay, so, is there a way for us to, you know, I know we talked about ADA access, especially for those, the swings, the accessible swings, and the shade structures. I know that there's some campuses that have them that are in not-so-great shape, and they've, you know, I mean, they're in the Texas sun, we know how that goes. And so if there was a way to pull that out and give us a number, is that possible? Maybe I'm, I know Jimmy's got, Jimmy's working furiously over there. Just because I, I know that, you know, that's something that, that would benefit all. You know, we're thinking about big picture here. And so I know that that's something that, that pops in my mind. I appreciate Desiree and her family doing that work, that was really, really great, and having the, the suggestions that they had. While you shuffle, I'll, I'll bring up one other, oh, Kara's got something, go for it.
We did, we did see, there is something for shade structures, to make sure that all of the schools get them, I think about half of them have it currently.
Okay.
And that looks like is 2.6 million.
Got it, okay, thank you very much.
Does that include the replacements for the existing ones?
No, that was strictly adding the new ones. And so you're looking at about just under 500,000 for replacement. So the campuses that have invested in structures already?
Yeah.
What we were gonna do in '21 was have enough money to replace the shade structure material.
Gotcha, that are already there. So it would be another half?
Yeah.
So 3.1.
3.1.
Does everybody, and, and replaces the old ones? It does all of them, the, okay, gotcha.
All the elementaries.
Wonderful. The next...
Before you leave that item, can we, can we make sure we put a bow on that item and then leave it? I'm curious, though, it, it's not a steering committee recommendation? Or was it not a steering committee recommendation because, I mean, there was, I understand there was a sensitivity to try to bring us, like, the least you could? So is that it? Or was, was it not going to rise? Was there other items that would have risen before it?
So the subcommittee had it as a Tier 3. And so that's why we didn't bring really any Tier 3s. They, the reason the playground equipments didn't make it, those were a Tier 2. And because of the way that the playgrounds have changed, where it's now a part of the, you know, the remodeling, the HVAC updating, it has now changed to where the playgrounds, when a school is up for that, the playgrounds are now part of that, and that's why we didn't include those. that. And that's why we didn't include those.
So playground equipment was a Tier Two. The shades were a Tier Three?
Yeah, that's Tier Three, right? The colors are very similar.
I just want to make sure.
It wasn't presented as a high tiered from this elementary subcommittee.
And so if we do this, is there another item that would have been next that's not getting covered then? Are we jumping, you know, down the line? Or do you feel like the issues are being addressed with the other items that have been added previously?
The Tier Ones were the HVAC updates, the Elementary 31, and the roads for Elementary 30. The Tier Twos were the roofing repairs and the student sinks. And so I, all of that was included.
Okay. Okay. That answers. All right.
I have a question in regards to the playground equipment that was Tier Two. Are they, is there, like, are they in dire need of being repaired? Like, is it a hazard for our kids? Like, how old are they?
Probably from when the time the campus was built, normally. And I know we had in there, what, one of the Cypress Elementary was considered, and then there were five other that were recommended. And so I know we were looking at getting six of them replaced this go-round, and then having, of course, as we do schools, we're going to be replacing. But that would bring us up to when we start doing our HVAC projects, we replace them automatically with it. That way, as we move forward, it will keep up with it. It's just we need the early six to be done and replaced now.
And what does that cost look like?
About 655, I believe, thousand apiece.
That's it?
Yeah, 665.
Yep. 665.
Well, and, and I can speak to Cypress. That's where my kids go. And we actually had a football practice there earlier this afternoon. But yeah, they're, the playground equipment there is in bad condition. I mean, there are exposed, sharp metal edges along some of the staircases going up. I mean, they're, 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 it's in dire need, for sure.
Can we get clarity then? Is what, oh, do you want to ask more questions about the playground? Okay. Okay. Because I know you had another question, too. But let's close on playground, and then we'll go to whichever one went to. On playground, can I get clarity then, Jimmy, of what you are understanding the board is asking? Because I've gotten confused about it as I've been listening.
From what we just talked about?
Mm-hmm.
Right now?
I just want to make sure we're all on the same page.
What, you know, we started out with the original number of 794, I believe?
No, no. I just mean about playgrounds. I just want to know what we talked about. Because we talked about all campuses, sunshades, play, I just want to make sure you know.
The shade structures would be to replace or add shade structures to all campuses that do not have it. Or if they only have one, they get their second one. You know, put two shade structures at each campus. Then we'd also have money for the existing structures that are already in place to be able to replace their fabric at the time it's needed. And then playscapes...
And that total cost is 3.1 million?
Correct. And then the playscapes, what we talked about, because we put those in our modernization HVAC projects, and we're starting at Nauman, you know, this go-round, if this moves forward, we have six elementaries before that, that haven't been replaced. So this will bring all those up to speed. Now, as we move forward, you know, in that 20 to 25 year, it all gets replaced every time when we do our modernization projects.
So then there's...
And that is 3.99 million, 4 million.
Is that already included in our, in our estimates that you gave us?
It hasn't been included, Jimmy.
It has not.
But...
It has been included?
It has not.
No.
Okay. So that would be 4 million for, just make sure, I just want to make sure I understand.
Yep.
Bruce, can you break that down for me? You're writing the numbers.
Yeah. So it's 3.1 million for the shade structures, and 3.99 million for the playground structures. So that's 7.09 million, or 7.1 million.
An additional $7.1 million that wasn't in those numbers.
Correct.
Okay. Board members, any discussion on that?
I guess my question is, is if they don't get replaced with this bond, then who knows when they will get replaced?
Right. We, we have a playground crew, two men that go around the district for all, I think it's 115 playscapes that they maintain. And so it's challenging. And, you know, they replace parts, but some of these parts are getting harder to be able to even get because of the age. That's why we're hoping to get them replaced and keep it on a cycle. Instead of just picking up, we want to get it in these modernization projects, just do it when we're there.
Oh, no, I agree. I mean, I don't want a child to get hurt. And we talk about safe environments and whatnot. And you're firsthand of know what it's like on that playground.
Yep.
Do we know how long the sunshades last? Like, is there an estimate of time?
10 to 15 years. 10 to 15 years.
The fabric is, the fabric's usually warranted for 10 years, up to like 100 mile an hour winds. But as long as you avoid major storms, which, which we, we seem to have a hard time doing, you know, they'll typically last 15 years. Yeah.
And we've had some by weather that have been ripped apart with the winds at campuses.
Okay. I think then that concludes the playground. Okay. Next question?
I had a question for y'all. I'm sure y'all watched Tuesday's board meeting, as, as we're talking about our long-range plan, and talking about the Leander master plan, and talking about all the work that y'all did with your recommendations. How, as, as the chairs, how did you feel that aligned to the, to the, you know what the intent, you know, of what y'all put together in CFAC? And what y'all, you know, as y'all worked through that process? What was your reaction, perception to how that aligned? And, yeah, I think that that's really what, I've been very curious. I, I knew, I walked away and I was like, gosh, I think that aligned so well. And I was worried. But y'all sat there and y'all did all that work. So I'm really curious how, how y'all thought that worked out.
I mean, I, we looked at a huge list of projects. And I don't think that anyone looked at any one project and was like, this is frivolous. Why is this even here? Like, it kind of feels like choosing between your arm and your leg. Like, which one do you need most right now? Because, like, I think everyone there felt like, these are all great projects. Like, I can see why they're on here. But how do you pick from them? And so I, I don't feel like I felt like watching that, like, because we, we all struggled with those same things. Like, how do you cut something like this? It was hard.
I have a question. Inflation since 2020 has risen 15 to 20% on products. But our HVAC replacement project from the 2021 bond raised 50%.
This is what we were talking about Tuesday. The inflation, those prices were developed in the fall of 2020. And now we're pricing them for the summer of '24. And so you've got to inflate it four years, not just two years, that most people will think. You've got 15% the first year. And I went very conservative on it, 25% the second year. Most people have told me it's definitely in the 30 to 35% range. But I went at 25%. And then I use 15. I'm using 15 for the next year. Because contractors are saying, they're not going to go down. They're going to flatline right now and sit about where they are. And so that's where we've, and if you run the numbers, it's very close to build it from the '21 bond number up. That many years, you'll be right in the ballpark of what numbers we have.
If we could go back, I, I don't think you had an opportunity to answer that.
Yeah. As to your question, I mean, I, I felt like there was a lot of alignment. It was, again, to echo what Kara said, there were a lot of difficult decisions to make when going through the laundry list of items that were presented to us. And we, we did, you know, we had a lot of different factors that were kind of influencing our decisions. But I would say that, you know, the long-range plan, you know, it, I feel like what we put forward, I think ticks a lot of the boxes. And I think that, I think there's alignment there.
I agree with everything that the other co-chairs said. And I think there was a, a lot of alignment. And when you look at some of the things that are being considered to be put back in, there were all the things that were the last to be taken. I'm taking, I think back to like interactive panels and some of those things. Those were literally, you know, depending on if we went with this dollar amount or this dollar amount, those were some of the projects that ended up right on the edge. So I think that, to me, illustrates a great deal of alignment.
So when we go out to our community and ask for a bond, if that's what we end up doing, we'll find that out at the next meeting. I think one of the things that's on the forefront of board members' mind is, if we didn't ask for these items now, the odds of us needing them are not only going to be increased for the next bond, but the expense is going to be increased at the next bond. So we're trying to weigh that out. So going down and getting some of these items to put on this bond makes sense. Is there anything, now that you kind of see where we're at, that, considering your discussions, are not included in this deliberation that should be?
I mean, I, I don't really know how to answer that, honestly. Because, like, we had that cutoff line. And, and everyone's looking at projects that were below it, that were like, oh, but that's the one that I really wanted. And, and that's the one that I, I think for me personally, one of the ones that I thought hit a lot of schools and for a small amount of money was the stage lights for the middle schools. It, it impacted every single middle school, and it wasn't a big dollar amount. And so that was one that I was sad to not see make it higher. But I think that that is probably different for every person who was on it.
I had a question about that. That was actually my next thing. Because I was just, we got to see all the cool musicals. And I got to go to Bearcat Night on Wednesday night at DMS. And the microphone went out all the time. And so I'm wondering, where was that discussion? Like you said, I'm kind of curious, because that's, all of our middle schools will be affected. And we have a fantastic fine arts program in our district. And that's where it starts, right? So what, were there any discussions behind that? And then Jimmy, what, what, how much does that amount, what would that look like to be able to add that? Because again, I'm thinking long range here. How can we get that into our schools now so they're there and they're supporting our students in the program?
We have 2 million here for it. I, I mean, it was a Tier Two item from the middle school group. And I, we, I think we talked about, I remember talking about it. It was one of those ones that, like, we moved immediately to have more discussion on in our first meeting because it was something that people were interested in. And so...
Can you tell me if that 2 million is lighting only? Is it lighting and sound? Lighting and sound. And to piggyback off of that, can you, you know, going back to the discussion about musicals and our packs, and the, the sound system in the packs at the high school level? Is that already in here? It's not?
Yeah. But we're, you want to go first, Gloria?
This conversation is kind of stressing me out a little bit. I'm like, and I'm just, there's a lot of things on there that we, like you said, right? It was like, depending on where you're coming from and where your passion is, I could look at that and be like, oh, these 10 things I really, really think are. And so I'm not saying that any of those are invalid. I'm just saying, at what point are we going to say, okay, these aren't, or these are? And that's, that's the work that, that they did?
Yeah.
And so I really want to, I want to respect that. And it also makes it a little bit easier for me, because I have like five things on there that maybe I want us to kind of think about. And I know that, that's not my, I don't want to do that. Because, you know, it might add another 20, 30 million on there. And, you know, if we all got those. So that's, that's my...
No, I totally get it.
That's, it's hard, right? Because like you said, it's the arm or the leg. And
Yeah.
It's like, we want them all. And that's why, that's why I feel like, if we don't do this now, we, all these things need to be done.
Right.
They all need to be done. And eventually, they're, they're all going to need to happen. And so we can't let that snowball out of control.
So the, one thing I wanted, so I'll leave the theater question there for a second. The one thing, you know, at the Leaf Gala, I happened to sit at the Vandergriff table, and I was with some administrators there. And one of the things that they shared with me is that some of the problems that they see, because I, we just sat and chit-chatted. And I, I asked them, I said, you know, what is the one thing that, that you find that families in the South are facing? What is the biggest issue? And, and they both looked at me and said, transportation. And so I want to be sure that when we talked about buses, we talked about buses earlier and the replacement of the buses, and I realized that that's not on there. However, I want to be sure that the South transportation hub, I guess we're calling it, is on here, correct? It's already included. I do know that, you know, they, they were able to share with me, and this, this isn't just a convenience thing. This is, comes down to kids not making it for breakfast, kids not making it for their first period, kids not making it on a pretty regular basis. And so I think that's a really important factor for our families in the South to recognize. I know we, we've talked a lot about things in the North and the needs in the North and the building and all of that stuff. And so I want to make sure that they feel included, and that we're talking about their issues as well. And so I just wanted to, to double check to see that that was indeed on there. Along with the buses, that wasn't. Okay, good.
I had a question on elementary school needs. I noticed for the sinks, it's Whitestone, Fabian, Cypress, Mason. Is Blockhouse Creek not included anymore?
It was in the last presentation. In the first presentation, it was left.
I just wanted to make sure.
It was left off, but then it was added.
Yep.
And then also, so just back to your point, Gloria, like, I think for me, is after having last Tuesday's conversation, and then especially last night's community conversation with LHS, kind of really opened my eyes to be like, okay, so we've got this, recommendations from this committee. And for me, I was kind of like, they were given a task with the information they were given, and they were trying to make it as small as possible. But I, if we do go to bond, in my opinion, and I know I'm just one of seven voices, I want to go big or go home. Because I feel like we have one opportunity here. And whether we go for five, whatever, 720 versus 850, I feel like there's no difference here. And that's, again, my opinion. But I just, I think with me, what I'm wanting to do is really kind of get, there's lots of questions going on in the community. Why was this chosen? Why wasn't the 2021 bonds recommendations come through? And so I think what I'm trying to do here is getting our, our community an opportunity to see, like, they're not, we're not forgotten. But at the same time, if we have, you know, what's the word? We could move them in or possibly consider, then I think we need to try it. Because I mean, there's, like you said, there's a lot of items, right? And I think, again, going back to that is, the main question is, we had this bond in 2021 with awesome things, right, that have put us in this pickle. And now they have this new recommendations. And so how do the two align? Like, where's the alignment between the two? And so that's kind of like what I'm looking at. I know we've never done this before, where we're picking stuff up and saying, put in. And I know, I know. But we've also never done a long-range plan before. And once we hit that committee, that was when the board decided to get into the weeds. And I think that's where I'm looking at, is how can we, how can this bond align with long range and the information we've gotten? But how can it also benefit everybody in the district? And so that's kind of what I'm looking at. And I'm just throwing it out there. And again, as a board, we get to vote and decide. And that's, that's our awesome job as a trustee.
I, I do think the long range in the CFAC does look at the needs of the entire community. And I think, I'm okay with us saying that, let's go back and look at it. But I think if we're going to do that, we have to start with CFAC. And then that means they got to go look at those other recommendations. And I, I don't, I don't feel, I feel like we can do that. I don't know if that's all going to happen in time.
Right. But some of these recommendations were on the Tier One and Tier Three. So they've already gone through the work. So that's where I'm like trying to see the alignment between the two. Like, the middle school thing was in Tier Two for this round. So if we've got $2 million...
Are we going to move all the Tier Two?
No, I'm like looking what aligns, right? What are we aligning? And what can we do, in my mind, that's going to benefit all campuses?
I don't know. I mean, I just, I think if we're not going to move all of Tier Two, then we're going to pick and choose which ones we want off of Tier Two.
Yeah. I'm wondering, is there, is there board appetite to let at least the discussions that have happened as far as... that have happened as far as, my question from Playground was what else is out there? Because if we escalate Playground, it's like, oh, well, I could have gotten Playground equipment or I could have gotten lights. And some of our community might have wanted their lights and their fine arts, but y'all went with, and some of our community might be, no, 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 Playground's really important to me. I don't, I don't know at this level if the board is really, if that's really where the board will do their best work. I feel like what I'd like to see is maybe if we can charge administration to let us know kind of that alignment, like pull us in. We don't want to go too expensive, but I just want to stay uniform. Because if we start picking and choosing different items down, I think that could be a challenge. Dr. Gering, does that make sense?
It does partly, but I'm not sure what you're asking us to do. Can you clarify what you need for us to do?
So if we do Playground equipment, can we see how that, does that align? Was that the next item? If it's not.
So we can for the elementary subcommittee and that would make sense to do that there. But then I don't think you can cross-reference them. So you mentioned lights at the middle school.
That would be a different group.
I don't think you can reference.
So are we going to go to every single group and go grab every single group's next line? Then would be the question? Middle school, didn't middle school rank?
I, I think you're going to run into problems with the way that's affected their work and the way that we charge them to do their work, right? Because we asked them very specifically to, to make a judgment about what they thought the community would accept. And that's the work that they went away and did. If you now go back and say, well, we're just going to do all these things, then, then I don't, I, I think that's a challenging work to do in a short amount of time.
So is it, is board appetite then to say, given when Dr. Edebury started off with the items of 818.6, to bring that back before the board, but then also have a possible discussion on 7.1 million in Playground or you want that included in the 818.6? So I just understand where board appetite is on that discussion.
I think that's why at least I was bringing those items up, is so the board can have that discussion.
Well, I think there was some discussion earlier, you know, from, from the community that there was some unanswered questions and I want to be sure that if there's any other questions that the community may have about how we are spending our money, that those questions get answered. So, you know, I feel like we're, we're having a conversation about, you know, bond again is not money in our pocket, right? It's the ability to be able to build and, and refresh and do all of the things that we need to do to take care of our kids. But if there's another, you know, if there's more questions from our community as stated that need to be answered, I, I'm hoping that, that those questions will be asked.
For our CFAC who's here, can you help add what your language would be to our community? Who goes, you know, how are you spending this? Why? Just, I don't know, how would you sum up y'all figuring out, these were items that were needed or, or was it not? Did y'all not do that? So.
Yeah, I think a couple of weeks ago, I'd said, you know, we were tasked with threading a needle, right? And yes, among some of the influences that we were asked to consider was, you know, given that we, we had a failed bond in '21, not, we weren't necessarily tasked with, you know, let's see, as low as we can get, really just kind of based off of our input from our, the communities in which we live, our sense of what is something that I think kind of balances, you know, the need to take care of our long, our long-term assets here, also plan for growth, also dovetail with the long-range plan. But also at the same time, I felt like that we, we really wanted to put forth a bond offering that I think could serve to build positive momentum. I, I recognize there is distrust among some members of the, of the community about how the, the district has handled its, its finances and how it handles its money. And so we, I mean, we, we considered that when putting forth this recommendation. And so while, yeah, there were several of us in the, in the committee that, that said, you know, gosh, yeah, if we, if we just have it all, let's do it. But we also felt like that, you know, the negative consequences of a consecutive failed bond could, could have very long-term impact and that maybe if, you know, I, I know we got to, not, I don't want to say we take baby steps, but given that, you know, over the next 10 years, you know, the amount of money that would need to be, you know, to, that we would need to, to have in bonds to do everything that we'd like to do, you know, what, what can we do today to kind of set that up, right? And so, you know, going with a really, really high number, we felt that, you know, we might be kind of, you know, you know, cutting off the nose despite the face, you know? So we, we could run into an issue of, oh, if we have a second failed bond, what, you know, that really puts us behind the eight ball. And so, you know, as far as the number that we, we came up with, again, it was, it was, you know, we did rely heavily on the subcommittees and their tiering of the projects. That was kind of the first, first cut, right? And then we went through our, our dot exercise. I mean, there were a couple of things that say, I guess unanimous items that we, we all said, all right, yeah, we're, we're fine, these things, we don't even need to talk about. And we discussed the remaining items, which were probably 95% of the, the items that we were, we were considering at that point. And then we did the, the hot dot exercise that we explained and, and that's where, you know, we, we kind of came up with the, the hierarchy, right? And then based off of just kind of a, a blind, all right, this is what we think, you know, each, each member of the CFAC wrote down a number for a bond that they felt kind of struck the balance of all the different considerations that we were asked to evaluate. And that's where we kind of came up with, okay, where does, you know, where do we, where do we hit that number with the projects before us? And yeah, again, yeah, whenever you start digging into the details, you know, there are a lot of projects here and there that, that, oh, wow, yeah, you know, me personally, I felt really strongly about, but they didn't make it because the other 13 members, between the, the other 13 members, there weren't enough votes there to support it. So, you know, there, there were some clear, and you saw some stratification with the, with the votes. There were some clear, yes, it's, it's pretty clear that, you know, these are, these are items that definitely are in. And then, you know, you start getting down there and you got to start whittling away certain things, so.
I had a question for the steering committee members. I'd like to know what information you were given about schools of choice, because I see there's two items on here. And I'd like to know what, what were y'all told? What was that information look like? Are you?
And if I could piggyback on that, that one's directional one, it's the School of Choice North. Is that specific? Did y'all, were y'all open to South or were you just figuring it?
Because that's my other question, because that's, doesn't align with our long-range plan.
If, if I recall, I think, I mean, there were some items on the long-range plan that we did include. Again, it became kind of a consistent with the, the items that we looked at through the subcommittees, what, what items from the long-range plan we felt kind of, particularly and also based off of our understanding of the board's long-range plan at the time, what, what kind of fits. But again, without, you know, again, kind of tipping the scales one way or the other that, that we felt would, would be inclutable among the other items in a, in a bond recommendation.
So I, I want, I guess this is an admin question. Any further clarification on what the School of Choice is? I know we've had this conversation numerous times, but I couldn't tell you what that School of Choice should be. And so, and there's also a lot of chatter right now in the community. They see School of Choice and they're like, why is Land or AISD supporting vouchers? And so I'd like to see if administration can kind of give us an idea what they have in mind for School of Cho, the School of Choice facility located in the North and why is it in the North and not in what we have in our long-range plan? I think that's a Krista question.
So I can't address the why the North. I would love for our CFAC chairs to be able to kind of talk about that conversation and maybe Jimmy can. But I would say as far as the type of school, Dr. Carleen and Dr. Benz went out and surveyed our community and so we have a list of what our community told us, right? We saw a beautiful video of fourth and fifth graders up there kind of talking about, we went out, we surveyed them, Dr. Benz and Dr. Carleen got everybody excited. So I know we have from our community, if we opened a School of Choice, these would be the preferred ones. So at this moment, this School of Choice design has not been labeled as a certain School of Choice, but absolutely we could do that and the board could say, we want our first School of Choice to be this particular type of school and we want this $3 million to address the design of it. And Dr. Carleen's going to come up.
We didn't designate it North, just to be a clarifier. Like that's, that's what was on our paper. We didn't designate North or South.
I would, I would love to think of another word for, for that. I think we all would, right? I know there's times where I talk to people about, you know, and I don't want to say magnet schools because magnet schools make it sound like you have to, it's like a high achieving and you, you know? And so I, we need to create a word for that because I know people have told me, I didn't know you were pro charter and stuff. And I'm like, I'm not. And they're like, why do you keep talking about schools of choice? And I'm like, so I say public school of choice, that doesn't help. I, I really thought that would help and it doesn't. They're just like, it's still a school. So, you know, and then I tell people, have you heard of LASSA? Have you heard of the Ann Richard School? And they're like, yeah, those are awesome programs in, in AISD. And I'm like, okay, that's what we're talking about. And so, so I don't know what the right word is, but I do think we need to rebrand, you know, separate from all this, separate from tonight. We should, we should brainstorm how the whole state should do that.
So, yes, I think, I think so, right? Because how do you determine between what's being discussed now at the state level and what are public schools trying to do to provide choice with the public school funds within their own community and their district? And that's what we are trying to do. Now, there are a couple of places that our public can go to look to get a little bit more information of the work that we've done. And so when we sent out that survey earlier in the fall, our SCR team, our School and Community Relations team did a really great job about creating a webpage for us on our website. So if you go to our Land or LISD website, our, our, LISD website, and then you can just type in Schools of Choice to search, it will pop up. It will give you the definition that we had been using since we started this work with our Program Advisory Committee. It also shows you a link to our current Schools of Choice, so our Early College High School, our New Hope and our Virtual Learning Academy. And then it also gives you links to go, uh, look and research the other types of schools of choice that we put on that particular survey. And it's links to other schools around the state and in the nation that are similar to that, so you can get an idea of what those would look like. We did that survey in the fall specifically for this reason right now. We know that schools of choice, when we say that, just in general, it can be really nebulous and we can't really define what that could look like. And so what we wanted to do is survey our community and our students ahead of time so that when this question came up, we knew what their interests were. And so the very top ranking for both the community and for the students was a STEM High School. And remember, these students are our fourth and fifth graders who would eventually have that ready for them to go, should we put it on a design and build. And so that STEM High School ranked number one in both our students and our community. And so we can look at some of the other ones that we looked at were Health Professions High School, a School of Business, a School of Design, all of those. We had a K8 Fine Arts Academy. There's a lot of different ones in there that we could look at and there's even ways to combine a couple of them. And so in some cases, the School of Design ranked, I think, third for our students, but that was based on using a design thinking instructional model. We could easily put that within the STEM High School and use that same type of instruction within there because it is a design thinking model. And so that is what some of our, in, in your STEM world that they use quite a bit. So there are ways for us to do that, but you're right, in order to make it a bit more concrete for our community, it would be good to be able to determine which program we want to start. Not the details of each program, but at least say it's going to be a STEM High School or it's going to be X and that will start creating more clarity for our community. And so that's why we did that survey, so you would have some ideas and then as a board could determine, what would you like for us to go and start with that next School of Choice?
So I think that's like what my next step is because I feel uneasy if we potentially go to bond and just saying, hey, designed for School of Choice, but we're not going to tell you what it is, surprise. And so how can we as a board have that discussion so we can give the community full transparency on what that future School of Choice is? Trish? I don't know who is answering that question.
We could schedule a board meeting on Monday night or Friday night or Tuesday night?
No, I don't think we need it right away, but I, I'd like to see it potentially, you know, I know what we've, Krista's told us today, but what I'm thinking of is potentially maybe the next board meeting or the next one, because the last thing I want to do is if we do potentially go to bond and we leave it just blank, you and I both know it's just going to go in another direction and it's already going in other directions. And I want to make sure when we put this, if potential bond together, everything is out there and, and clarity. And I realize we're not going to be able to name that School of Choice quite yet, but us having this discussion right now and Krista letting the public know, and like you said, it's on the website, what the potential options are, like I would like to see the board narrow that down and pick it. And that doesn't mean Monday, but I'm just saying, before the bond.
Before we call the bond, we call the bond, if we call it would be on, well, it's on the agenda for Thursday.
Right, I'm okay leaving it. What I'm looking for is the education piece, like can we have it immediately? Because that's.
So you mean like at our, so you're not saying this would be information you'd want to get settled before we call the bond?
No. Right, so like when we start, right, say we potentially call the bond, right? It's still listed like that, but I'm just saying, maybe the next meeting we have immediately about Schools of Choice and the board just gets to pick, I'm assuming, what direction and what that School of Choice is.
So I, I guess I, I need to hear board appetite. Is this a workshop? I, I.
Does it need to be hard?
I'm hesitant to say this would be an agenda item, but maybe it is an agenda item in the meeting. I need to know board appetite or is this a workshop and we need an additional meeting?
I think it's an agenda because they've got all the data already and we've already had, what, three meetings on high-level Schools of Choice? I think what I'm looking for is let's bring that data back, let's bring it in the long-range. What does it look like in our, in our calendar? And then the board makes the decision and we can go out to the community and be like, if it's the STEM, hey, this is what School of Choice is, this is what is our fourth and fifth graders are coming to. And it also fits into our long-range because eventually we have to, we have like 600 kids out there and it provides space for them.
Can I, um, I, I agree that in order to present it, people are going to want no more details, right? And so I think it could, it doesn't have to be that next one, but maybe shortly after, maybe that next one, so that as we are, if we call this bond, we can tell families. And so maybe, you know, the meeting after or after that, we kind of bring, go through that data that was gathered and we talk about what it is. Because if we call a bond, it's a lot easier to talk about this, you know, I'm just saying, if you said the highest was STEM, I'm not saying it has to be STEM, I don't want to put anyone's preferences on there. It's a lot, we can, we can tell people that and, you know, it's just, it's, it's a lot more specific. It's easier for people to, to see themselves in it and, you know.
Yeah, I think.
Maybe it's just, I think it's just a simple agenda item that we can kind of just go through that data and talk through that data. And I know y'all have also visited places throughout the years and so just having a conversation to.
Yeah, I think it takes the ambiguity out of it.
Ambiguity, you know what I mean. It, it takes it out of it. You know, the more clear we can be with the community, you know, we, we've heard about transparency and all of those things and so the more detailed we can get regarding what it looks like, I think that's important is just to make sure that we have that kind of dialed in.
Yeah, I think it's, it doesn't need to be hard.
If you would like, I could also draft a board memo to send to you all with that information that we presented, so you can have some time to digest. I know we have two new board members. I'd love to be able to give you some time to look at that before we actually present it and so I can turn that around because we still have some of the presentations and stuff so that y'all have that information.
Francesca, while they're getting ready to end Paul's, well, I'm going to go to you next. Do you have any questions that you would like them to include or things that you're thinking about right now? Because you are kind of dropped in, you are both dropped into this conversation right here at the end, so.
No, I, as far as Schools of Choice goes, just the board member, board memo, oh, see you mouthed me. The board memo would be great, just to have the data. I agree that I think we can't put it on bond materials to go to the community if we don't know what it is, because that will just cause more confusion that we don't need.
Paul?
I have a question and it's about building some of the schools. I know Gerald ISD is thinking of putting a bond up too and they- And they have an elementary school that's going to open, uh, in August of eight twenty five and their cost is forty-eight point five million with a nine hundred capacity students. Ours is going to be seventy-one million for eight hundred.
Okay, I love that. We can talk about that, but wait, let me, like I did to Chris earlier, I stopped the conversation, let's make sure we close the loop on school of choice. Is there any information you need, Krista, to get you about school of choice?
Whatever you want to give the rest of the group.
Okay, all right, great. Now, the, let's close that up and I'll go back to Paul and then let's ask your question again with, is there anything else y'all need from us on that?
I don't think so. I'll draft that memo, get it out to you, and then if there's any follow-up questions you have, you can let me know.
Okay. Right now, off the top of your head, when do you think we could be looking at a possible board meeting, an agenda item at our board meeting? Would it be not the one where we're have on the agenda to, if we could call a bond, but it would be, would it be okay to have the next one?
I can, I can, I have that information ready to go, so whenever you would like to put it on an agenda item, I'm more than happy to come in and, uh, let you know and, and kind of help with the conversation. Um, that's, again, that's why we did it so early in the school year so that you weren't waiting for us to gather more information, we had it ready to go for you. So whenever you see fit to put it on that agenda item, I will be ready to go with that information for you.
That's excellent, thank you. And, and that way our community knows ahead of time too, that we are going to be discussing this, okay? Okay, all right, Paul, now, uh, tell us again that there's a building in, in Gerald.
What I'm looking for is a little bit more details on, in some of our bond structures. Gerald is building an elementary school, very similar timetable as us, uh, very similar capacity, nine hundred versus our eight hundred, but it is twenty-three million dollars less expensive. They're twenty-two miles down the road, that's not that far, so I'm wondering why is ours that much more significantly higher?
When you start comparing facilities, you have to understand what are they building? What are they including in that number? I mean, districts across the state don't build exactly the same facility or include the same things. And so I've done many number of schools comparisons and they're never, it's apples and oranges. So when you're looking at dollars, you have to understand what are their finishes? What type of facility are they building? Because this board has always built what's more sustainable and it's going to be cheaper to operate. And so that's one thing we do. Most of our utility costs are a lot lower than surrounding districts because of the way the money is spent upfront. And so we do that a lot. And so without knowing exactly what they're, I know some architects that worked up there, I'll, I'll make a call just to try to get some idea and if, hopefully they're actually the one that designed it and they're designing our schools too, I'll, I'll get a good comparison and I'll let you know.
Thank you.
Jimmy, can you talk a little bit about, um, I, I know there's been times where some of the sites, just to prepare the site for a school is significantly, just as a house, some lots, it's ready to put that foundation on and some lots, you gotta spend, you know, a quarter of a million dollars to prepare the lot. And so if you can talk to a little bit like that and maybe for our new board members, also talking a little bit about, um, our energy footprint in our schools and how that impacts not only the utility bill, but also the environment that...
Definitely. When you develop, especially in this part of Texas, it's rock. It's expensive to excavate and, you know, build on these sites. And then a lot of, when you get up to Gerald, you're in clay materials a lot of times, especially east of thirty-five, you're in clay. So it's totally different. And then also recharge zones with Edwards Aquifer recharge, we spend a lot of money on detention and water quality ponds. And so I'd have to, I'll verify what they do, but as Gloria mentioned, energy savings, we have a ex-energy manager for the district sitting right here. He was one of the first. And so our district has energy management plan and we actually go through our facilities and save cost avoidance, which is not spending the money. And I believe we're in the, close to, since we started thirty-five million, something like that, that we have saved over the years. And our energy star, everybody recognizes energy star, our energy star average score for our schools is ninety-six. Very few schools across the country are in that realm of scores. And so our energy scores, we save a lot of money because our goal is to put it in the classrooms, keep it in the classrooms. We do not want to send money to the utility companies and not keep, not be able to put it in the classroom. So we, you know, the board has been very good about building energy efficient buildings and spending the money upfront, if it makes sense. We have to make sure of that, of course, five to seven year paybacks on improvements, but when we do that, we end up saving the money and not having to maintain the buildings as much or spend utility costs. And so we've been very fortunate in this district.
And Paul, if you'll permit me, I think that's a great example and just for all of us to think about. And this idea, question probably just came to your head all of a sudden. Board members, if you know ahead of time though or something, that's a good question because if Jimmy had known ahead of time, he'd have those numbers and be able to tell us exactly. He's just kind of guessing right now. Um, so anytime if, if we know before we get to our bond, if, if we know there's something ahead of time. And I get it, just like sometimes that you're going to be in a meeting, you're going to be like, oh, wait, I just thought of something I want to ask. Yes, you still ask it, just know that you won't be able to get the absolute answer. You might just get the more, you're having hypothetical for us. So, um, absolutely fine. But, um, I do also want to ask a question about, as we're looking at bond cost, these are cost, and, and if, if it couldn't get more confusing for our community, these are costs based on estimates, based on inflation going over a period of time. How many years are we planning for using this bond?
Three years.
For three years out. And so the costs aren't going to be baked in, so when the community goes and does this, if you can get it cheaper, it doesn't mean we have to do an expensive bond, we, doesn't mean we have to spend all those items, right?
Exactly. As Matt actually said in one of our meetings, it's like a line of credit is what you're dealing with. In the way our bonds are sold, we don't sell it by project. So if a project has a hundred million dollars in the budget, we don't sell the hundred million and sit on it. We sell by cash flow for the twelve months of what we're going to spend. So if we only spend eighty million, twenty million has not been sold. And so it's authorized but not sold. So we're not going to go just sell money to sit on. It's only what we need and that's been, that's where we, I think, can actually see and help our ratings because we don't just sell it and sit on it, so...
And I think as we move forward, um, one of the things as board members, we're going to end up doing is Jimmy brings us our GMP, our, our prices all ahead of time, so those are those times to be asking questions as well. So we are, it's a checks and balance. We say, as a community did, our community helped pull these bond items together? Did y'all look at it? Did you see the need? Do you, is this a real list, which they've told us, yes. Administration, because of what has happened, we know security, we're going to have to do that. They brought those items forward. And then when we vote, we're not voting to spend this money, we're voting to ask for the community to give us that line of credit. And then we still have work to do because as those items come out, we approve as this is the right amount, we think this is right, we have questions. Did I sum that up well?
Yes, exactly right.
And Jimmy, if I can, I just want to kind of, you know, over my two years of being on the board so far, is the number of times that you've come back to us and said, we've got bond savings, we've got bond savings, we've got bond savings. So I know that you and your crew do the very best you can to save the money, spend the money wisely, do all of the things, and yet still give our community and our kiddos a safe, amazing learning environment with great energy. Um, because I, I was able to see, you know, um, was it, I think it was Tarbin, right, before you guys put the walls up, um, to see the way that we heat everything. It was amazing. So, I mean, just things like that, I feel like we, we do it right and, and we still come under budget a lot of the time. Um, and so I, I appreciate that, you know, a lot of the time that bond savings can be used for other, you know, other things and, and items like that. So thank you so much.
Yes, thank you.
So I had a question about, um, early childhood centers, is that it right? So long-range plan, right? We discovered if we have, uh, schools in the north, right, with pre-K and special education ELE programs, right, that are exploding. So we were told basically we either need to do early col-, early childhood centers or build another elementary. And right now I'm looking at elementaries are costing us about seventy, I mean, seventy-nine million dollars. So where does that fit into this? Because I see two problems. We've got, you know, the north schools completely, I mean, they're exploding with this program. How are we going to ensure that we're keeping space for our K through five, but also not, you know, cutting like we heard tonight, some of our pre-K programs?
The early childhood centers by, we've looked at it and if we need the one to the north side, you know, I think it's scheduled to open twenty-six, I believe. And so because of backing up with zoning and allowing time for the repurposing of facilities, we've got to have that on the ground. If you don't, that's five hundred kids at least that are not going to be coming out of the north schools, which means we've got to have another elementary on the ground in probably twenty-six, twenty-seven, which means it's got to be in this bond if you don't do early childhood centers. We need two early childhood centers or an elementary school, additional elementary school than what's included.
And then the, my other question, so if we don't do an early childhood center, correct, with those north campuses that are exploding, then we will have to put portables in, correct? Until we get a solution, which is going to cost us more money? So my question is, is what does those two early childhood centers look like and how much? Because they're part of the repurpose buildings, correct?
Yes.
So what does that look like for us?
I mean, it's thirty-seven point four million for each of those. But that is early childhood, as for this facility that we talked about, Leo, which would be the north early childhood center, it would repurpose this facility on the ones in Cedar Park, it's actually refurbishing, renovating the lower floor for early childhood and upper floor for whatever program that is going to go in that upper floor. It does the entire building for that.
So you said it's thirty-seven, thirty-seven million dollars to renovate one? Would there possibility do one and then another so the community gets a feel of it? Or do you honestly feel like we need to have two right away?
The way that we actually did some of the zoning and exercises, it pulled some of the north schools to the center one also, the, where we were locating. And so if it's sort of going to play dominoes, that means we've got to, we're going to overcrowd this one very quickly if we don't do the center one.
And I think you made a good point because when we were in our long-range discussions, we, some of the scenarios we did and talked about with the population going down at certain schools was those early childhood centers, correct?
Yes.
So I guess what tier was that landed on? Because I watched a CFAC committee meeting and I honestly was a little frustrated because I feel like they need, I wanted to go tell them all the information we learned for long-range with early childhood, but I'm curious, what was y'all's discussions in that? Because it's, it's kind of an all effect, you know, it's affecting everything and it also saves us money if we repurpose buildings, right?
I think, and you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, I think that it would be fair to say that if, in talking about long-range planning, things in general, we didn't feel like we had a lot of clarity on a lot of it. And I think that part of the range that we gave you, what did include if you wanted to add an early childhood center, but only one? Um, and so, I mean, is that a fair assessment of, I think that we kind of, the feeling of the CFAC was, we don't really understand the long-range plan well enough to be putting these things in and the board understands it and so they're going to have to be the ones who make those determinations.
So you said thirty-seven for million for both, so how do we get that on? Because if we don't, we're essentially going to have to build another school in three years at seventy-nine million dollars in addition to the portables.
In the presentation Tuesday night, it was included in that number.
Is that the renovation for modified utilization?
Yes, as for, they're all in there.
I have a question about, I, I went through the, the twenty-twenty-one bond items and then compared it with this one. And most of the projects that were designated in twenty-twenty-one as capital improvement and major maintenance were included here with the exception of the district facilities. So both packs and the ag barn, which are used by everybody, are, how far behind are we with major maintenance on those? Because they get such heavy usage, my concern is just that if we have an emergency in those facilities, that affects everybody.
As far as ag barns, one thing we've done in district, we've done, we're doing electrical improvements to those campuses or those facilities as well as we're doing, you know, they're looking at security cameras district-wide. And so a lot of the improvements for security or the ag facilities will be taken care of without putting it on the bond. And then as far as the packs, they're going to be needing it. They're, you know, I think Don Two was built in ninety-nine, if I'm not mistaken. And so it's, it's coming up on its age and needs replacement of stuff. I know it was included in the twenty-one, but it just didn't make it on this time, I don't know. It's, it's one of, it's, like everybody said, there are a lot of needs. It's, it's hard to, you know, separate them all because you see all the different needs. Because our twenty-one needs primarily are still there, they're just more needs now. It, as you move them along, it just grows, it makes it harder.
Board members, if I can kind of wrap us up just a bit and for the CFAC committee, thank y'all so much for coming on. And this is, this was a challenge and I am so thankful for y'all. Um, and please know, y'all did an amazing job and I don't want you to go out and go, man, my hands were tied and, and they were in there and they just grilled me and I, I, this was one of those situations where it's like that winter storm where you think you've prepared enough and then something else happens. And so we had the long-range plan, we had the security needs coming in, we had a master plan that was done and we just now have those. So it's, y'all did a phenomenal job. We're using the base of everything y'all have given us as a foundation and we are so grateful for you, um, going through it and spending a lot of time, so thank y'all. Board members, before we send them away, I want to focus on the items that, you know, not so much the cost right now, my question is the items because they're here, our CFAC can talk to that. Do you have any questions? Paul, do you have any questions about the items that are in that list that we have? The items that CFAC worked on?
Like, what particular items you're thinking of?
Well, the, we have a, a list of items that's going to come before us to, if we call a bond. So do you have any questions about, um, do you, do you not know what those items are? Do you not understand why that's a needed item? If you have any question, we can ask CFAC now.
Is, we're voting for the bond as one package though, not individual though, right?
You, you would, yeah, I think we vote for props, I, I think it's A and B and I think it all comes together. Dr. Garing, can you confirm?
I can. So based on the items that we have in there right now, there will be, have to be two propositions, a proposition A, which will be the bulk of, of it because it's all the new construction and all of those things. Um, and then there'll be a very, a much smaller proposition B because of the technology pieces that have been added. But we don't have any athletics or fine arts that have to come out separately.
And is that, that's state law, right? Because it has to be separated out?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, we've already had bond counsel giving us some advice about how to separate that out.
So do you have any questions about those, those general items that we've talked about?
Well, one, one item, um, the turf, have we actually done a cost benefit analysis of turf versus grass?
Yes, we've done it many times. The cost of turf, I could tell you, if you look at it from a, just true dollars and cents, it's probably a little cheaper to do grass. But where you run over it is the amount of use that can be done on the turf fields. Grass fields, you have to rest those and so you're limited. And the number of hours, I can pull that up, but is dramatically higher on turf fields because it's pretty much unlimited use on a turf field. And if it rains, you can still use the fields. Where if you, when it rains at a baseball field, they've got to stay off of it for a day or two till it dries enough so they don't damage it. And so that's what we're seeing right now with, Glenn has all turf fields, so when it rains or when we had all the drought and, or the water restrictions, the other campuses couldn't go out and practice because the grass was so dry, it would damage it so much, they wouldn't have grass for the baseball season. We couldn't overseed it, so it was really hampering the other campuses, but Glenn could still practice. And so it's trying to get parity among all the high schools where they can go out and practice anytime they want. Plus they can actually have seasons during the summer, we don't rent our baseball fields because of their grass fields. And we have a lot of people who want to use them, but we don't allow it because the maintenance of them. And I'm sure, do you have same issue in grip? And I'm sure, do you have same issue in grip?
Yes, absolutely. And the, the district that I work in, in Dripping Springs, we have, it's been an interesting thing last, even the last week with the weather we've had recently, with the rainy weather. I would leave my office and it had been raining all day. And my office is literally just behind the baseball field. And it had rained all day and they're out there practicing baseball. But yet I'm driving here to pick up my son who plays baseball for Rouse and they've not been able to practice, you know, for weeks. And so, and this, I mean, this is something that we talked about a lot as a committee too. Because it just come down, comes down to, you know, in some ways equity and parity amongst those high schools. And you've got five of the six existing high schools and large groups of people, large groups of, you know, parents and athletes and, and that, that utilize those fields. And, and, you know, that's one of those things where, and we spent a lot, a good bit of time talking about that one of the things that, you know, if we're trying to have things in the bond that, that benefit across the district, this is one of those things that we felt like large groups of people could get behind and see the benefit as we do this, you know, the ability to do it at the other five high schools to match what Glenn has.
Paul, any other questions?
No, this time.
Okay, Sade?
No, I'm good, thanks.
Anna? Okay, Glory? Christine? I don't know if y'all noticed, I'm trying to keep the conversation. So I started with you and I'll start, I'm sorry, Paul and Francesca are on the end. So y'all get to start off the conversation sometimes, but, okay. Thank y'all so much, we appreciate it. Thank you CFAC. Before we conclude this item, I feel like we need to be clear what happens then at the next meeting, because that'll be the next time we see you guys. So what, we're going to come into the meeting, what are we going to see with agenda materials?
I would like some clarity on that, please, just so we make sure we bring exactly what you need.
So I think what they need is, is this sheet, but updated, right? So we have an item by item sheet that lists, and it's color coded. And I think that's worthwhile. It shows what tier one items were recommended by subcommittees, what tier two items were recommended by subcommittees, then long range projects that were not included in any of those subcommittee recommendations. And then the capital renewal modernization projects that were not included in the subcommittee recommendations. So that, you know, brings, it, it helps you get from subcommittee recommended this, steering committee recommended this, adding long range plan items recommended this. And then we've got a couple of extra items, the buses and the safety and security that we brought extra tonight. So we'll include that in this list with the totals. Where I need direction is on these other items that we started the evening talking about playground and some of those other things. Because right now those are not included on these lists. So I need direction about how much, how much you want me to put on you and how far you need me to go down that list.
We're going to open it up.
Would it be possible to get different scenarios so the board can kind of decide? Yeah, with the numbers? So we have the rec, we have the sheet that you have? And then see what the other scenarios look like with what was talked and discussed at the board meeting, just so board members can see it with their eyes? And, you know, next possible, it's Thursday, right?
Okay, so to clarify, what we talked about were shade structures, playgrounds, and then middle school lights in cafeterams. But are there other things or are those the three?
People started talking about high schools too, right? I think Francesca mentioned high school packs, right?
High school auditoriums or high school?
I don't know.
I know, I was asking about the high school packs just as far because they weren't included. So I was just asking about them as far as are they going to be okay if we wait another bond cycle for those?
I have no idea, was that even, sorry, was that? Did CFAC, did y'all get to tour any of the packs or get any information about the packs? Okay, I'm just curious.
I don't know if the, like, high school subcommittee, I don't know if they did, but we did not.
Like there was a high school subcommittee and that would have been on their piece. And so I don't want to.
I think I, I would caution on some of these things. If, if we're going to do, as we're looking at these things, if then administration will let us know, like if we're, if we keep reaching down, if we're leaving other items that our CFAC had in another tier, I don't want to, I want to go with their order. So I want to go with CFAC's order for importance.
I mean, the, the sound and light updates, that cuts across all middle schools. But the band instruments also cut across all middle schools and they're very similar in cost. So you see, it's, it's, it's hard.
I want to talk about robotics.
Yeah.
Now do that.
Can we do the, the amounts for the playground shades though? Because some of the playgrounds are being included here with the HVAC updates, if I'm saying that correctly, they're?
Not the shade structures, placecape replacement.
Okay.
Are included with the modernization projects. The shade structure quote is not a district standard. And so we don't include them in that. If it becomes a dis, once the bond, if you pass a bond that we outfit these, that's now standard and we're going to build it into our placement cycles.
I mean, I would like to see that added just because right now that burden falls on our families to raise that amount of money. Oh, I know, I tried three years to raise money for that. But right now that burden falls on our community and that's each individual PTA or PTO organization to raise that amount of money. And then it's, I mean, trying to navigate that as a parent volunteer is incredibly hard.
And it really becomes an equity issue too, because you can't raise, you can raise it in some schools and you can't raise it in none of an opinion some others.
Don't band boosters also fundraise for replacement? So then isn't that an equity item too? I'm just saying, if we're going to go down this road, then that's what I'm, that's my, the issue where if we're going to say, well, this is a fundraising for PTAs and PTOs and to be equitable, we need to include it all, I'm good with that. But we do have a lot of music programs and high schools where boosters fundraise for that. So then that's an equity item. So then do we need to put all, that's where I'm like, that's where it gets to this point of, right?
I mean, I think it's more of, like, what is the expectation that the district really should be providing for the, what should a standard be? Like sun shades, it's 100 degrees half the year. It's, it's too hot, it's too sunny.
CFAC, are y'all enjoying this? Because I bet y'all went through something very similar. I would like to make sure we trust their process on what they did and how things came up to the level. So Bruce, where do, where would you recommend we go from here?
So I, I'll take some risk and say that let us go look at it and then bring you back some lists, right? That make sense, based on the conversation that we've heard of where I think you want to land. Let's, we can definitely bring you the base, right? And, and then we can bring you some alternatives if we think that that's worth recommending. But we'll bring some recommendations to you, does that work?
So we're going to let you go do that hard work, thank you.
I mean, sorry, I have one question regarding high school. And this is for Jimmy. Did you, this was an email from someone who is very familiar with that Vista Ridge area about the road. Do you have any response to that?
Oh, yes. I have. The steering committee, we actually brought in the city engineer from the city of Cedar Park and talked to the steering committee about that project. You know, he explained the benefits of the project and the city definitely supports it. I mean, they've been working with the district probably since the 17 bond. We talked about it. And then it didn't make it past the subcommittee. And then 21 bond, it actually made through the subcommittee, but it didn't get passed. And now this time it's being recommended again. And so it definitely will improve. And I know there's been discussion, it was sold as a pedestrian safety project. And it, when you talk about the information, it's actually a operational and pedestrian project. The way it becomes a pedestrian safety is not the initial design. It's the effect, the impact on the traffic on the campus. It's getting people out of that campus a lot quicker. Because right now it takes sometimes 40 minutes to get out of that parking lot. As you know, students and parents get impatient when they're sitting there that long. And that's when you have people making irrational decisions and going where they shouldn't be. And that's when people get hurt. And so what we're trying to do is get that traffic off that campus quicker, improve the flow so you don't have it. And with the right, the traffic design as it is, the city has modified it to actually where the people turning into the campus don't have a free flow turn. They almost have to stop then go, which provides additional safety for the pedestrians as they move through that intersection. And so we're, the city firmly believes it's a very valuable and worthwhile project for us to on, take on. And of course, it's a lot of money, there's no doubt. But there's a lot of traffic that goes through that intersection. As the city is, they stated at our meeting, that intersection is properly designed and operates great for the neighborhood and the commuter traffic. As soon as you drop in the school traffic, it does not work. And we're causing majority of that impact. And so that's why we're recommending it to move forward because it needs to be done at that intersection to provide the safety for everybody coming and going and getting these people in and out of that campus. Because they're going to get larger, you know, they're a large campus and it's going to be large for a while. And so we feel it's worth putting the other.
So then we're clear what's going to come? All right. And these items will be also loaded into board book? So our community can see ahead of time too? So they're able to, to respond during citizen comments?
You're going to hate me for this last question. I'm just letting you know that.
There's no hate.
As I'm thinking about this, this is really Jimmy. So I know you're like, why are you bringing this up again? But I'm just asking, thinking it through. So the shades are now, they are a standard with the playgrounds moving forward? Or they're still not?
Not yet, not until a bond is passed and it makes it a standard.
And then it'll become standard on all future ones?
Yep.
So wouldn't be too much of a thing to say.
Okay, so help clarify for me though, so that I understand. So the, the new placecapes that are in the HVAC renovation refurbished projects, do you have shade structures?
No.
So what are you saying then?
What, what I was, what I understood the question is, if we do the sage structures, you know, on the bond and put them on every campus, will they become standard on all new campuses? When we build a campus, it would be part of the new construction.
Okay, does that make sense? Because that wasn't what I understood.
That, me neither. And so I was thinking it through and I was like, hold on, as I'm trying to process that. So then my next question is, then I don't feel like I'm breaking the rule of adding on things if we're just saying this is the standard. And so if we just standardize that across all of them, I would, I think that's something to, as you're looking at those numbers. Because it's, I feel like at that point, we're saying this will become standard. So what would it take to make that standard? Not just on the new ones, but on the old ones?
Yep.
Does that make sense?
So Jimmy, the 665 on the new ones though?
That's placecapes. 3.1 million.
But at some point, the number that's in the renovation projects will have to change because you're adding shade structures to them.
Right, but it, it would be the fabric side of it.
No, because you just told me that the standard on the new ones is just placecapes, not shade structures.
Well, but if we add it to the bond to equip the rest of the schools, we don't have to go add them anywhere. They'll be at each campus already, is what I understood.
Well.
We'll let y'all work on that.
Like 17 campuses.
So, so, yeah.
Yeah, well, y'all, y'all work on that. And we'll look forward to that discussion, part two.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, we're going to go ahead and if we're okay, wrap up that agenda item. Before I bring us to the next agenda item, I'm going to hop down to item number 11, board meeting debrief. And the reason I'm hopping down is because by the time I get to closed session, laptops are already getting closed. So board members, if you'll notice on board meeting debrief, that is the time to fill out your information about how the meeting ran. Did you have the information you needed? Did it work? So, oh, I'm, I'm not, I'm going to go there, yeah. I just, I just know by the time I get done with that one, there'll be closing laptops. So that is your agenda item to do that continuous improvement for our board to let us know how we can continue to keep our meetings running smoothly. All right, now I'm going to go back up to operations. Item eight, C1, consider approval of a resolution to pay employees for days closed due to bad weather. Are you presenting that one, Dr. Gary? Oh, no, here we go, okay.
Pete's coming.
I'm sorry.
With his allergies apparently.
All right, good evening, Madam President, members of the Board of Trustees, Superintendent Gearing. We have a, obviously we had some bad weather last week. We were closed four days. So our policy DEA local states that if we, as a board, you as a board, want to pay the employees those days missed, it needs to be done via a resolution. So tonight we are bringing forth a resolution to pay our employees for the days that were missed. Also pay our employees, so everybody will be paid, no one will get docked or anything. But for employees that were called to come in, particularly the auxiliary employees, you know, custodial, maintenance staff, probably some technology guys, cafeteria, wherever, people that came in and checked for buildings, make sure they were safe, had it come out during the bad weather, that they will be paid their regular rate of pay as well. Above, above the normal rate of pay. And if they were to actually work more than 40 hours during that time, then it would be, it would be eligible for overtime in accordance with the Fair Labor Standards Act. And so, so we bring this forward to you tonight for you to consider. And I'm here to answer if, if there are any questions.
Before we get a motion, board members, if y'all can just read through. Because sometimes when we get approval, then it's like, oh, but I thought so and so was included or I didn't know so and so was included. Or make sure you're clear of what, what we're doing. I think you laid it out well, I just want to make sure we all see in writing. And if there are no more questions, then I need a motion.
I move that the Board of Trustees approve the resolution, which will, one, pay Leander IST employees for the days the district was closed due to the bad weather, regular rate. And two, in addition, pay auxiliary employees who were required to report their regular, regular hourly rate of pay for hours worked up to 40 hours, effectively resulting in double pay. And three, time and a half for hours worked beyond 40 hours, effectively resulting in 2.5 pay as presented.
A second?
I have a motion from Christine, a second from Gloria. So any other discussion? Okay, then I need a vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven ayes, no nays, motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thank you, board.
All right, board members, it is 10:18. And we are now going into closed session for purposes permitted by Texas Government Code 551.071, consultation with attorney regarding pending or contemplated litigation and our attorney client privilege matter. Texas Government Code 551.074, deliberation regarding resignations, terminations, employment, reassignments, duties, and evaluation of personnel and public officers. Texas Government Code 551.0821, deliberation regarding matters whereby personally identifiable information regarding one or more student will be disclosed. Texas Government Code 551.072, deliberation regarding the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. There will be no action taken in closed session. We will come back out to open for any action.
All right, Board members, it is eleven oh nine P M. Are there any motions from closed session?
I move that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendations for teacher employment contracts for personnel additions as presented in accordance with the salary scale policies and contract of Leander Independent School District for the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year.
I second.
I have a motion from Francesca, a second from Anna. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven ayes, no nays, motion carries. Is that it? Just one? All right, Board members, we have moved through our agenda item, and if there is no objection, we will adjourn at eleven oh nine with a small reminder to fill out your hot dot over there on if you're feeling hopeful, energized, did we do good board work in spot of, uh, that's kind of in line with our continuous improvement that we decided at our team of eight. Meeting adjourned.